We will now recite the Pledge of Allegiance. It's normally over here, so let's just make believe it's here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. Thank you, everyone. We will begin today with 5th graders from Page School, and I just want to talk a little bit about the 5th graders. They are involved in Energy for Common Good, and it is a not-for-profit organization advancing the acceptance of fusion as a clean energy source, soon enough to make a difference in the climate crisis. They partnered with Schenectady City Schools to host an Introduction to Fusion after-school program called the Generation Fusion Pilot Program. The first half of the program was at Page Elementary School, and the second half of the program was at Tech Valley Center of Gravity, a Makerspace in Troy. Throughout the 15-day program, students learned about climate change, its causes, the fundamentals of atoms and molecules, energy generation, clean energy, and fusion energy. On February 18th, they hosted a presentation day at Tech Valley Center of Gravity to celebrate the students completing the pilot program. There were politicians and fusion professionals who spoke at the event, and they were Congressman Paul Tonko, Mayor Gary McCarthy, Jane Hotchkiss, President of Energy for the Common Good, Leben Kompleis, Head of the Communication at ITER, the largest international fusion experiment located in France, and co-founder of Tech Valley Center of Gravity. And Ife Zhang, Vice President of R&amp;D and Applications of Superpower Inc., a high-temperature, superconducting-wire manufacturer in Glenville. Students presented the projects they made utilizing the Makerspace, which were interpretations of fusion reaction to parents, Schenectady schoolteachers, administrators, fusion professionals, and the greater community. The first cohort of Generation Fusion students were King Walker, and I apologize if I pronounce names incorrectly, Gitanjali Budram, Eni For... Yes, we can clap? Yeah, and please come up, please come up.
As your name's called, please come forward, okay?
Eni Formula, Oyanani, Analysia... Analysia Tulsidas, Siler Williams, Isaiah Nunez, and Aureli Joseph. The teacher supporting the students throughout the entire program was Nicole Marini, under the school leadership of Principal Patrick John Pierre. I would like to give a big welcome to the young innovators, 5th grade Page students, and Director of Educator for Energy for the Common Good, Kayla Miller. Welcome.
Hi, everyone. My name is Kayla Miller. I'm the Director of Education at Energy for the Common Good, and we are an organization that's working on pushing the acceptance of fusion energy soon enough to make a difference on climate change. And so, we had these group of students. We have one that's in the bathroom, and he's going to join us in a few minutes. He... All of them did such a great job learning such an advanced topic. So, this is plasma physics. It's really advanced, like graduate-level, like college physics. And they did such a great job. And I wanted to thank everyone here, the school board, the superintendent, everybody. Thank you for, like, giving us the initial okay to launch this program here. And I wanted to thank Nicole. Thank you for being the teacher that was with us on the day-to-day, handling all of the details. Carlos, Simone, Kayla, handling the logistics. And then the 5th grade teachers, too, helping us select students. And then Principal JP for allowing us to work with the students at his school. We really appreciate it. And so, just by a show of hands, how many of you know what fusion energy is? Okay, so just a few. So, fusion is what powers the sun and the stars every day. It's the mechanism that makes them shine. And so, with your hands, do you guys remember what fusion is? Can we show them? Yeah, so fusion is when two light nuclei, so two different types of hydrogen, they collide, and they fuse together, releasing a lot of energy in the process. And we can use that energy for a clean energy here on Earth. And scientists and engineers right now are working to bottle this energy and essentially create stars on Earth, so we can have clean energy and reduce our reliance on greenhouse gases. And so, we are going to have our students present their projects. I'll help you, I'll help you. So, Eni and Gitanjali, do you want to go first and just... You want to do it all by yourself? I'll help you, I'll help you. Here, I'll hold your project.
Hi, my name is Eni. I'm in 5th grade. I'm going to tell you about the steps of fusion. First, you put fuel in the machine that are deuterium and tritium. Deuterium, tritium are going fast because they have heat in the machine. Deuterium fusion fuse together because they are in a tight space. When deuterium fusion fuse together, they release a neutron that gives us a lot of energy to fuse. And that's the step for fusion.
Do you want to explain your project a little bit? No? Good job. Okay, so, or you want to go now, because you're still waiting on... Okay, you can wait for Isaiah. And then, here.
If it makes you feel less nervous, you can talk to the board, as opposed to a whole crowd. It's up to you. It's up to you.
No.
Okay, alright.
Hi, my name is Aureli. Step one is you put the fuel in the machine, and the fuel is deuterium and tritium. Step two is deuterium and tritium are squished in a tight space, and heated to temperatures warmer than the sun. Step three, deuterium and tritium fuse together because they're in a tight space. Step four, when they fuse together, they form a helium atom, releasing a lot of clean energy in the form of a neutron.
Do you want to explain a little bit of my project? No?
Can we see it, though?
Here, here's our project. So, the cool thing about their projects, they got to make part of them at Tech Valley Center of Gravity in Troy, which is like a pretty big Makerspace. So, they used a laser cutter to make these, and they also 3D-printed these. So, there was a lot of cool technology that they got to utilize throughout the program. So, now it's Isaiah and Gitanjali's turn.
There are many reasons why this program, Generation Fusion, should keep going. It should keep going because it teaches us children how global warming is getting worse and worse. The program shows us the clean energy sources that we could use. It taught us about this climate crisis. She taught us how long ago they knew about our climate changing. Ms. Kayla didn't need to teach us this particular topic. That's why this program needs to keep going. Now, here's my project. The steps of a fusion reaction is: Step one, the deuterium and tritium nuclei are placed inside the Tokamak, which is a fusion machine. Step two, deuterium and tritium nuclei are confined into a really tight space, then heated to temperatures hotter than the sun.
Here's step three and four. I decided to mash them together. Deuterium and tritium fuse together, and the helium releases a lot of energy.
This pink part of the project is a referenzization of a Tokamak.
Also, which is a fusion machine?
Do you want to say that louder into the mic?
A Tokamak is a fusion machine, by the way.
This is tritium, which is made of two neutrons and one proton. This is deuterium, which is only one neutron and one proton.
The one, this one is called the helium.
They did a great job, and we also want to thank their parents for being so supportive and allowing us to work with their students. And you guys are doing an amazing job, and I can't wait to continue this program with you guys. So, thank you. Yeah, can we do a full group photo?
Fusion!
If you guys want to know more information about fusion, I have, like, brochures and resource guides, so just come up to me, I'll be here.
And before you go, I just want to say thank you so much. I know that you all worked very hard. You collaborated together. You had some good conversations about what you were going to do. And this is brave. As adults, it's hard to be in front of a huge crowd like this, so thank you for coming. We are so proud of you. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for having us.
Next, we are thrilled to have the Second Employee Recognition Awards, presented by Assistant Superintendent for HR and Professional Learning Development, or Professional Development, Shannen Tahoe. As I said, this is an exciting night, and it's so nice to see everyone here tonight. I love seeing all the families here to support the employees of our school district. This is probably one of the best things that I get to do, because I am so proud to work for Schenectady City School District. And every day, I feel blessed to work with such talented and hard-working people, and it's nice to be able to recognize them tonight. At the Schenectady City School District, we put into place a strategic plan to continuously improve our school district by being dedicated to our four pillars of success. These four pillars represent who we are, and they include student and graduate success, passionate people, partnerships with families and communities, and efficient systems and equitable resources. Tonight, we are proud to honor our employees who are being recognized for our second pillar of success, which is our Passionate People Award. I've asked each of the principals in our schools to nominate someone who they believe represents this pillar. The main goal of the Passionate People Award is for us to engage and retain passionate, dedicated people who continuously learn and improve as guardians of equity and advocate for our students' success. And that is what each and every one of our employees who are being recognized tonight are dedicated to. So, I would like to start with Hamilton Elementary School, and Leah Kedley, to talk about who they've nominated for this award and why. And I'm going to call everybody individually tonight, and then the employees and their families can come up and be recognized.
And then, make sure you don't leave, because we do like to take a group picture at the very end. So, I know sometimes we get awards and we run out. Sorry, Principal Kedley, go ahead.
Good evening. I am here, and I can, for anyone who does know, I've been with the district now for four weeks, and I absolutely can attest and stand by this nomination. So, this evening, we are nominating Colleen Keo for the April, or I'm sorry, yes, well, for the Passionate Educator Award. So, Ms. Keo is an outstanding teacher at Hamilton Elementary. She's involved in all aspects of the position, not just the curriculum, but everything that embodies success for students. Ms. Keo helps her students succeed, providing opportunities for them to feel good and want to come to school. She has created an environment where everyone feels valued and belongs. Ms. Keo demonstrates mutual respect with her colleagues, family members, and community members. She's a learner for life and loves to engage in professional learning opportunities, and takes her new learning and applies it to her classroom and school events, and this is improving our community. While there are too many wonderful things to list, some of her contributions include her leadership roles, and how she's embraced running the school store, teaching in the after-school program, PTO events, community engagement activities, and making deep and meaningful connections with the families of Hamilton. Ms. Keo is driven by her love to help students and their families. She understands that education and equipping our students with exposure and opportunities will help lead to a brighter future. She is morally and ethically grounded in doing what is right and leads by example for all. She epitomizes what we all aspire as educators and makes a difference in the lives of others, all while remaining positive and full of energy. We are so grateful to have Ms. Keo as a part of our Schenectady community and a true Hamilton Husky. Congratulations.
Next, we have Howe Elementary School. And Ms. Dana Russo. I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Sitz, our principal.
Thank you very much. I am very, very passionate about the person that I nominated for the Passionate People Award. You can't talk about passionate people in Schenectady City School District without mentioning Dana Russo's name. Dana Russo is a reading teacher at Howe Elementary. Her passion and dedication to the students, staff, and District of Schenectady is evident, not just in her reading groups, but in everything she does and is part of. Along with being an amazing reading teacher, Dana works on a team to head up our Building Random Acts of Kindness Committee. Dana works hard on this committee to make kindness the norm in Howe by working with teachers to help teach and find resources around each monthly trait, creating monthly spirit weeks, and organizing Random Acts of Kindness awards for each month. Dana is always looking to bring fun experiences into the building for the Howe students, such as Tay Fisher, Willie Dean, John Gray, and most recently, being the Zuzu African Acrobats, which our students just loved. One of the many great things about Dana Russo is that her passion extends not just to the building and the students and the staff, but to the community as a whole. Dana coordinates monthly events we do with community partners, such as Pennies for Pets, Socktober, where we place third out of all the organizations competing, in donating 878 pairs of socks, and I promise we'll get back to number one. And the latest one we did, Read for Ronald McDonald, where we have raised over $4,000 so far. Dana Russo then takes it upon herself to take these things that we have donated and bring them herself to the organizations that we are working with. These are just some of the reasons why I am excited to be able to nominate Dana Russo for the Passionate People Award.
Next, I'm going to turn it to Zaller Elementary School. Where we have Mr. Desmond O'Connor, and I'll let him announce his Passionate People Award winner.
Good evening. I'd like to introduce Cory Shinner. Mrs. Shinner has been the art teacher at Zaller for 16 years and has been in the district for 22 years. And she has maintained her passion for the success of our students and our schools for every one of those years. Zaller students love art class, and the artwork they produce is amazing. What is even more amazing is how proud the students are of the intricate work they are able to produce as a result of Ms. Shinner's meticulously-planned and implemented lessons. One of the highlights of my day is walking into the art room. The students' work is fabulous, but what really impresses me is how proud they are to show it to me. Mrs. Shinner invites students during the lunchtime to make murals, to decorate the school, and other art projects. She works with our garden club to produce art also around the school. She chairs our Arts and Ed Committee and brings in show after show of entertainment and educational things for our students. Thank you, Mrs. Shinner, for everything you do for our Zaller students.
Next, we have Lincoln Elementary, Ms. Timis. I love the applause and the enthusiasm. I'd like to introduce you to Rachel Richmond. She's my nominee. Ms. Richmond is a 4th grade teacher at Lincoln Elementary School, and she embodies what it means to be a dedicated teacher in Schenectady. Teaching is more than following a curriculum for the core subjects, and one visit to her classroom will show you that she values student connection as much as academic growth of her students. She also understands the urgency of the work to be done and looks to grow her knowledge around teaching and learning. 4th grade is not an easy space for many students to navigate, as it is commonly a time when students begin to have shifts in their friendship groups. Each year, Mrs. Richmond works to build a caring community within the class where she supports students through these shifts. She holds community circles. She has students join her for lunch, and she knows all of her students intimately, their likes, their dislikes, the things that make them happy and sad, their friends, and their families. In addition to her connection with the students, Ms. Richmond is always willing to jump in to help a colleague. She is a resource for all the staff. In school meetings, she asks thoughtful questions, and she presents practical solutions to any problems that we are working to solve. Ms. Richmond treats each day as a new adventure, a new opportunity to help students grow, both socially and academically. Her commitment is exceeded only by her sense of humor. She is a tremendous asset to Lincoln Elementary and to the Schenectady School District. Thank you, Rachel. Next, returning to MLK Elementary School with Kristen Monret.
Good evening. Good evening. So, I want to preface this by saying that I waited until I was not in the building, and I texted Carrie and said, "You're going to be really mad at me, but I nominated you for something," because she doesn't like the spotlight. But, she deserves it, so here we go. Carrie Barber has been a teacher in Schenectady City School District for 13 years. This is her first year as a literacy coach, and the decision to leave the classroom was not an easy one for her. With that said, Carrie spends the majority of her days in the classroom mentoring teachers, modeling lessons, and providing feedback to students and staff. She's gained the trust and respect of her colleagues in a way that allows her to give productive feedback in a non-threatening way. Carrie has a do-anything attitude, especially when it benefits the children. Once, she knew her class needed a brain break, so she decided to take them for a stroll through the hallways while singing and dancing. Another time, she actually was sick for the day, but she made me patch her in on the computer, so that she could still teach from home, sick, while the sub just walked around and checked on the kids. That's Carrie. Her brain breaks and all of her goofiness are an enjoyment and benefit to everybody in the building, not just her students. She studies individual student data and uses this information to help teachers improve their practice. Carrie looks at the whole building and how she can help make it better. She is passionate about her students, her colleagues, and living a fun, fulfilling life. We are very grateful for everything she does at MLK.
Next, we're turning to Page Elementary School, JP. Here comes Dr. JP. Come on, where's the claps?
So, this is Mrs. Heidi Harlow. Heidi is one of a kind. Ms. Harlow works tirelessly on behalf of staff, students, and family members. Ms. Harlow dreams big on behalf of Page Elementary Community School, and finds ways to always make those dreams a reality. For example, we wanted to take our school on a school-wide trip. So, Ms. Harlow wrote a grant and made it happen. Ms. Harlow also teaches her students how to advocate for themselves, which recently led her students to present to both Mr. DiCaprio and Mr. Dangler on a playground redesign for a proposal for the Page Community Playground. In addition, she consistently strives to make culture-responsive instruction integral to everything we do as a school, and she does it in her classroom. For example, she currently has her Guyanese students writing a book about the Guyanese culture and their experiences. Who does that? Come on, come on, you should just clap for that. Alright, alright. Along with that, she has spearheaded our school-wide service and social justice project initiative. Last, Ms. Harlow supports student council, PTO, BLT, SEP Committee, and mentors new teachers on her free time. She does a lot, she does a lot. And you know what? She never says no to her principal. Not because she can't, but because she is passionate about seeing her staff, students, and families succeed beyond imagination. She cultivates love and genius every second, every hour, and daily. Mrs. Harlow, thank you for all you do.
Next, we have Pleasant Valley Elementary School. Here comes Christina. Next time, you'll sit up front, won't you?
Good evening, everyone. I'm excited to present Jennifer Corrigan. She's a reading teacher at Pleasant Valley Elementary School. Jen Corrigan is passionate about reading. She's continuously learning and improving her practice to ensure all students meet with success. This year, Jennifer achieved her National Board Certification, which is huge and a lot of work. In addition, she's currently piloting a new reading intervention system for the district called the 95% Group. Jen and I frequently discuss podcasts and new books that are part of the professional development she engages in independently. She is the epitome of a lifelong learner. In addition, Jen goes out of her way to support all of our students. Even our most difficult ones are always looking for Ms. Corrigan, our families, and her colleagues at Pleasant Valley Elementary School. She is definitely the embodiment of a passionate people.
Next, we have Van Corleere Elementary School. And I'm going to have Joe read this one, and unfortunately, our passionate person was unable to make it tonight, but I'm still going to recognize her tonight. going to recognize her tonight.
Thank you, Shannon. Good evening, everyone. On behalf of the Academy, I'd like to accept the... That's the wrong word. Sorry. Principal Delamater could not make it tonight, but I think it's important... She's going to have a small spectacle tomorrow to recognize her person, but I think it's important we all recognize her in front of the board and to our respective audience. So on behalf of Principal Delamater and Van Corleere Elementary School, we nominate Lynn Curtis, paraprofessional at Van Corleere. Lynn has worked at Van for 23 years, as an attendance para, an administrative para, and the heart of our school. Lynn works tirelessly to ensure students are at school, families are heard, and the communication is ongoing. Every morning, Lynn greets students at the door to welcome them all by name into the building. She has personal conversations with all students who cross her path and make it a point to personally check in with students who needed a check and connect from the previous day. During lunch and recess, Lynn can always be found assisting students as they navigate different social situations. She's always a listening ear, she's a safe haven, and she is a pillar of excellence for the Van Corleere School community. So on behalf of the district and Van Corleere, we proudly recognize Lynn Curtis.
And I would proudly recognize Joe DiCaprio, who steps in whenever needed, a very passionate person. Next, I will turn to Keene Elementary School with Carrie Messler. Come on down to The Price is Right.
Shaleah Ford is one of our security monitors at Kane Elementary School. Shaleah started with us this year and has been a welcomed addition to our team. Ms. Ford truly embodies a continuous learner and a guardian of equity. Within weeks, Ms. Ford joined our anti-racist building leadership team, attended a variety of trainings, shared resources, articles, and videos with her colleagues, and she serves as an advocate for our students every single day. Each morning, she greets students and families as they arrive at Kane, and at the end of the day, you can see her in the parking lot saying goodbye and see you tomorrow. Throughout the day, she is working with all students to help them find success, both in and outside of the classroom. Ms. Ford has been recognized by her colleagues in our building shout-outs throughout this year. She is a staff member that has received the most shout-outs this year. Just listen to what they say. No questions asked, she has shown up time and time again, showing support in the most loving and caring way. She has exhibited and taught incredible patience and has become an invaluable asset to the Kane team. And she is a hard worker, always positive, and always, in all caps, willing to help. And her quiet strength, wisdom, patience, and dedication have impacted everyone in the building in so many positive ways. And she is always there to help when I ask her for support. She is kind and thoughtful, she is an all-around amazing person, and she is always patient, kind, and caring. We are lucky to have Ms. Shaleah Ford on our team, and I couldn't think of a person more deserving of the Passionate People Award than her. Thank you for always putting kids and families first.
Next, we have Woodlawn Elementary School with John Perro.
I'd like to recognize Heather DeGregorio, a paraprofessional at Woodlawn Elementary. She is a passionate person, always supporting both students and staff. In the classroom, she demonstrates patience, compassion, and helps her students inside and outside of the classroom grow. For our staff, Mr. DeGregorio helps behind the scenes for our staff celebrations, making sure they're always beautifully decorated, well beyond what myself and my assistant principal have put out, and always putting those little nice final touches on everything to make it truly a home away from home. And also, too, she this year has created the Woodlawn Wellness Program, and that focuses on self-care and celebrates our hard-working, passionate staff. Each week, a member of our staff is selected at random and celebrated on Wednesdays. We are so appreciative of her support and passion she has for our school community. We felt that it was important to celebrate her through the Passionate People pillar recognition as a well-deserved honor for someone who selflessly puts students in our school community first each and every day. Thank you on behalf of Woodlawn, our school community. Heather, great job.
Next, we have Yates Elementary School. Just be careful, because it is a hazard.
Melanie Alvarado, security monitor, Yates Elementary School. Sounds like some people know her. Melanie Alvarado, like I said, is a security monitor and parent liaison at Yates Elementary School. Initially joining the Yates family as a paraprofessional and a parent, Melanie quickly earned the respect and trust of every parent, staff member, and student. Melanie is passionate about student voice and advocates for every student and parent on a daily basis. Known for her firm, caring, and energetic style... Loud and proud. Ms. A. is often identified as the adult in the building who students trust the most. Melanie Alvarado deserves to be recognized for the Passionate People recognition as she is and a dedicated employee who continuously learns and improves as a guardian of equity and advocates tirelessly for our students' success and safety every day. Choose kind, Melanie Alvarado. Congratulations.
Next, we have Central Park Middle School. It's calm.
I have the honor of Ms. Yarwood. I am honored to have her in my building. Ms. Yarwood is the sunshine at Central Park Middle School. Whenever you see her in the building, she is always upbeat and has a huge smile on her face, regardless of what's going on. Ms. Yarwood is a rare find and able to teach both Spanish and French, so please don't take her. Ms. Yarwood spreads positivity, engages students, and generally enjoys teaching. She is reflective, open to change, and always welcome to new ideas. Ms. Yarwood consistently engages, encourages, recognizes, and rewards her students as they progress through their studies. She is flexible, adaptable, and patient with her students, providing them with the best experience of a new language. Ms. Yarwood understands her students might be going through some difficult challenges with the new language, as she provides real-world learning experience and engages her students as lifelong learners. And I am honored to have her at Central Park Middle School.
Thank you, congratulations, Stacy. Thank you. Next, we have Oneida Middle School with Mr. Farina. Oh, look, we have Maggie Palmieri.
Thank you. I did, I wrote this for Mr. Farina, so I kept it short and sweet. If you know him, you understand. This is Ms. Esposito, the social worker, one of many, at Oneida Middle School. She was really excited about this and the hug that I'm going to give her at the end, so that's why she's here. Ms. Esposito embodies what it means to be a passionate person in both her personal and professional life. She easily develops a positive rapport with both colleagues, students, and anyone that crosses her path. Her door is always open to anyone in need. She provides a safe space for anyone who is lucky enough to encounter her, a little sarcastic sometimes. She goes above and beyond for anyone who crosses her path. Once you are considered Ms. Esposito's student, you are forever in her heart. She will be sure to keep an eye on you and your grades and attendance, even when you're at the high school, and occasionally she'll pop up for a visit just to make sure that you're well, you're behaving, and you're following the directions. She has the perfect balance of fostering the social and emotional needs of students, helping them academically, and holding them accountable for their actions. Between the aforementioned qualities and the knowledge Ms. Esposito has, she's not only an asset to the district, but also to the Oneida family.
Next, we have Mount Pleasant Middle School with Nicole Biet.
This is Ms. Donna. Every building needs a Ms. Donna. But we're going to keep her. Donna White-Wilson has been an integral part of Mount Pleasant for many years, and she truly embodies the Passionate People pillar. She is dedicated to her work and our students. She is truly a guardian of equity, and she is a tireless advocate for the students she serves. Ms. Donna is called Sunshine, both in the building and outside, because she is truly a ray of sunshine. She is always positive and loving. She tells me that she's praying for me all of the time. One of her roles is bus duty. In the morning, she makes sure that each student has a warm and friendly greeting. She notifies us of each student with disabilities who gets off the bus and makes sure that not a single one is left behind at the end of the day. She is also a tireless advocate for all students. To some, Ms. Donna is a soft place to land when they're having a hard time. For others, she is a firm hand guiding them toward the attainment of their best selves. For the students in her classroom, she is a supportive skill builder. Ms. Donna is the true definition of a guardian of equity, making sure that each child gets what they need, and that is why she is Mount Pleasant's pick for the Passionate People Award.
Congratulations, thanks for everything you do. Thank you, Nicole. Next, we have Schenectady High School, Mr. Green.
Ms. Darielle Langston. So at the high school, very large building, so just to pick one person out is really, really hard. But the immediate, when we met with our team, Mr. Weinman, the freshman academy principal, stepped up immediately, maybe jumped up and did some jumping jacks and says, "Ms. Langston is it." So Ms. Langston serves as the freshman academy secretary. Her smile, as you can see, warm greetings and commitment to staff and student excellence is unprecedented. Each day, Darielle is committed to ensuring every student and staff member has the ability to thrive. Beyond her job duties as the leadership community secretary, Darielle is an advocate for the community. She is accessible, informative, and communicates clearly to ensure that all families have access to the best educational opportunities. She holds all students to high expectations and prepares student celebrations when those expectations are met. Darielle Langston is the definition of what Schenectady City School District defines as a passionate person. Thank you, Darielle, for always being your best self for our students, families, and community partners. Thank you.
And I'm just going to say, Dennis usually tries to recommend three or four people, and I keep telling him, "One person, Dennis, one person." So next, we will turn to Scala. S-C-L-A, Mr. Defazio.
I just have to double-check if I can read off the paper or if I should use... I'll use the paper. Yeah, it's the better fit. Good evening, everybody. I'm the proud principal of Steinman's Career and Leadership Academy. Thanks for coming tonight. We are super excited and proud to choose Ms. Jessica Nicotum for this award for Passionate People. Ms. Nicotum serves as our school counselor at Steinman's Career and Leadership Academy. She is often seen smiling and laughing with staff and students throughout the day. Ms. Nicotum prides herself on building positive and supportive relationships with students and families. She consistently invites positive role models to engage with our students and share some of their life experiences while developing a mentor-mentee relationship. Her infectious energy, calm demeanor, and supportive environment attracts not just students within her case though, but any student within our school community seeking a safe and supportive space or outlet. Ms. Nicotum knows all of her students by name and face, personal interests, current academic status, strengths, areas in need of support, and most importantly, their favorite snacks at local lunch destinations. Which is why any day of the week, you might find different lunch groups made up of staff and students breaking bread together while having meaningful conversations about those challenges and misconceptions so many of our students face every day. Finally, she always makes time beyond the school day to connect and support her students by attending their extracurricular activities throughout the school year. So thank you very much for being so passionate, Ms. Nicotum.
Thanks, John.
Mr. Defazio, your phone.
And my paper, Mr. Defazio. Next, we have Washington Irving with Jessie Boy Lance. I know, exactly. Come on down, come on down.
Thank you. I feel this is the best time for the best April fool's joke ever. Ha, ha, sorry. No, it, well, since we get to go last, then I have to have the best story ever, right? So she's been working for 40 years in the district, she walks to work from Cobleskill every day. No, that's not it. But it, so, both ways, uphill, that's right. It, so, it's my honor to recommend Jessica Caravino. She is the licensed mental health counselor in the diversion program. Since its inception, been with us for seven years. Ms. Caravino works closely with students, families, and dozens of community partners all day, every day. Students are evaluated with research-based assessments, helping form plans that are developed with the parents and their guardians to support the students' development and ensure that they have more skills to avoid being suspended in the future. Community partners connect with the diversion program to help wrap services around the students, while Mrs. Caravino keeps everyone focused on the student and the family. Mrs. Caravino's support of children is absolute. The mention of her name makes students stop and reflect that she has always been there for them. I can't remember an ERT meeting or any other conversation about a student where Mrs. Caravino didn't say, "I love them, I just love them." It's like, you know what they did, right? No, that's it. But she absolutely, and she means it from her heart, just the, with her head tilted and that motherly tone, just lets you know that these words are from her heart. This is the reason why we are privileged to recognize Mrs. Caravino as the definition of passionate people. So thank you, Jess.
No, Jessie was wrong, he's not the last person. We have, sorry, Jess. City is our campus, we have Mr., there he is, Chris.
We have Mr., there he is, Chris Chang.
Yes, Mr. Roy Lance, come on. So, I have the, I have the privilege of introducing Ms. Amanda Cruz, part-time breakfast and lunch server, part-time crossing guard, part-time school nurse, part-time school secretary, part-time school safety officer, I guess, sometimes, and full-time school counselor at City is our campus. Yes, absolutely. I don't think she fully knew what she was getting into when she agreed, but, but that's what she does every day. Amanda Cruz exemplifies the adage of a passionate person that you always want in your corner. One of the most common things I hear her say to me and to students is, "Don't worry, we've got this." As the school counselor for the City is our campus students at both Proctors and Center City in the early college and the high school program, Amanda works tirelessly to ensure that each student and family's experience is one of overall warmth, understanding, and always focused on student success. She is passionate about building engaging and trusting relationships with each of her students, her colleagues, and works tirelessly to build and sustain the positive connection between home and school. Additionally, she makes it her mission to ensure that our faculty and staff feel supported and equipped to help every student succeed, and that includes her very impressive charm offenses, or offense, no, not offenses, offensives with all of the people we work with downtown. So, the people at Center City and Proctors know her charm very, very well. So, again, on behalf of the district, passionate person, Amanda Cruz.
Congratulations. Thank you, Chris.
Now, this is our last award, and I'm not even sure how this award came to be because each principal was required to nominate one person for an award. But what happened was, our elementary principals got together, and they have nominated collectively an additional person for an award from our ELT, our district leadership team. And so, I'm gonna have Joe DiCaprio come up to help me with this, to announce our winner nominated by the elementary principals.
Thank you, Shannon. And that's exactly how it came to be. Rob Flanders, on behalf of the elementary principals, let's go, Rob, expressed a desire, and there was complete agreement, which rarely happens in our group, rarely, but without hesitation, complete agreement on this person. And, and it is a member of our executive leadership team. So, on behalf of our elementary principals, I am beyond honored and proud to recognize Jeff Russo, our district director of safety at school climate. Jeff, come on up. So, a little bit about Jeff, and this is what drove the nomination. Jeff is our district director of climate and safety. The elementary principals would like to unanimously nominate Mr. Jeff Russo, district director of climate and safety, for the Passionate People recognition. In this newly created position, Jeff joined the district leadership team with a passion and plan for changing our culture to a positive and safety-oriented mindset. Jeff has developed a team of professionals dedicated to fostering a climate of safety through relationships with the community and through clear communication, and those two things happen without hesitation regularly. In a relatively short period of time, Jeff has recruited and hired an entire department, developed communication protocols between buildings, developed and implemented an incident control center, developed an emergency response guide, and reestablished the relationship with the Schenectady Police Department. Jeff Russo has established a department of professionals by engaging and retaining passionate, dedicated people who continuously learn and improve as guardians of equity and advocates for our district's and our students' success and safety. I'm even more proud to call him a friend. Jeff Russo, congratulations on behalf of the district. Thank you for all you do.
Shannon, we'll just have everyone come up for...
Yes, can everyone just come up? And I gotta say, it's a happy Russo house. Two Russos nominated for awards. Nice. Can everyone come up that was nominated and wanna get a picture?
Yeah, she didn't want no one to know.
It's a secret.
Secret.
Board, if you wanna stand up, they take your picture from further back, too. They do get you in the photo.
Was it really a secret?
I don't think...
Yeah, okay.
Justin, you gonna grab the photo, Justin? Okay.
We're good. We're good. Yeah, yeah, we're good. Honestly, he goes further back, you take it from the back. You're fine. It's not about us, it's about you guys.
Don't be shy. Come on in. He's got... Justin, if you can hold your hand up so we know which camera to look at. Justin is right in the middle with the blue shirt.
You're fine. You guys are fine. He's up at an angle. People hiding, people hiding. Hide my gun.
There we go. This is right where Heather wants to be.
Hold on, hold on. Get in, hold on. Hold on now, Justin.
Not visible. She's right there. It's fine.
Justin, you ready?
Three, two, one. There you go. All right. Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations, Passionate People.
We're gonna, board members, we're going to take a five-minute recess.
Yeah, board members, we're gonna take a five-minute recess so that people can take pictures, give hugs, reset the meeting, allow those people to leave quietly, and then we can restart. Good job, Mrs. Tahoe. Good job.
Just sort of the board, he's not gonna...
Just sort of the...
Every single kid, it's like a joke.
She's not gonna be...
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 Yeah, it's a possibility.
Hopefully I'll see her, like, I could see her, took it from the teacher's side.
I never know.
High schools are different.
I've done...
It's not like we're...
I've never seen her.
I've never seen her.
I just see her.
I just see her.
I'm like, are they gonna pass?
I'm like, I'm gonna pass back to my...
I'm like, I'm gonna pass back to my...
Bernie, it's been five minutes.
Bernie, it's been eight minutes.
Already almost eight o'clock.
Little phone, too. She can't think back.
She's only here all over again.
Exactly.
It was so good to see you.
Thanks.
We will be beginning in one more minute. I'll accept the motion to approve the agenda presented before us this evening. Motion?
The move, Erica.
Thank you, Erica. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Nohalani. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Approval of minutes. The minutes of the February 15th board work session and the March 3rd, 2023 Board of Education meeting are presented for approval. May I have a motion to accept these minutes? Motion?
Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy. Second?
March 1st, though, I would point out.
March 1st. Thank you. March 1st. Thank you. And second?
Second, Erica.
Oh, thank you, Erica. Any additions, corrections, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. We are now transitioning to the privilege of the floor. Do we have anyone signed up? No? Okay.
Do you have a thing for that?
Would you like to speak?
Yes.
Okay. May I have, may I have your first name?
Karen.
Karen, and your last name, Karen?
Gilbert.
Yep.
Bring the mic to her.
Welcome, Karen. You're welcome. So, I'm just going to read a little something before you share your comments, okay? "We are about to convene in the public comment period of our meeting. Although state law does not require us to hold a public comment period, we have chosen to do so because we believe it's crucial for us to hear from our community members about their concerns and issues. Having said that, please note that the board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a discussion. Accordingly, please do not expect the board to respond to your concerns and questions tonight. This is because we take your concerns and questions seriously and wanna have sufficient time to process and research issues, if need be. We will, however, respond to your questions and concerns at a future meeting or have the proper staff member get back to you at an appropriate time. Please be aware that disrespectful comments or comments of a personal nature directed at an individual such as an employee or board member either by name or inference will not be permitted. If this occurs, we will ask you to end your comments. We ask that speakers please address their comments to the board directly rather than the audience. In the unlikely event the meeting becomes unruly, the board will recess the meeting and return once order has been restored. Finally, I want to remind everyone that you may submit your written comments to the board in lieu of speaking during the public comment period if you choose so. The board will now welcome public comments. You have three minutes for your comments." Thank you.
Um, I wanna ask the board to see whether or not they could look into different things for the gifted children that are in this area. We have gifted children in all the elementary schools. I met one of them that goes to the new elementary school right near Mount Pleasant Middle School. She's a gifted guy and he's a little girl. She's four years old. She's in the fourth grade, and she's been reading since she was like three years old. And the gifted program would be an asset to Schenectady, 'cause you don't know from elementary school, middle school, and high school who's the gifted kids. We have to find out who they are. And if we get a gifted program up here started in Schenectady, we'll have children where we can get grants for them to go to college when they get into high school. We could get the money where these kids, if we have the gifted program, these kids will be between first and second grade, second, third grade, third, fourth grade, fifth, sixth grade. Because you don't know from elementary school, middle school, and high school who's the gifted kids. We have to find out who they are. And if we get a gifted program up here started in Schenectady, we'll have children where we can get grants for them to go to college when they get into high school. We could get the money where these kids, if we have the gifted program, these kids will be between first and second grade, second, third grade, third, fourth grade, fifth, sixth gr- fifth grade. And then when they go to the high school, when they go to the middle school, it'll continue on. Because these, we have gifted kids in this community. They're not being recognized. We need to recognize these gifted kids. These are our future. If we don't recognize them now, we're gonna have a major problem. Because these kids are gifted. These are kids that can teach the other kids. We have a serious problem with the reading. By us having a serious problem with the reading, we need to grab these gifted kids and help the ones that can't read to read. The ones that are gifted with the math, help the ones that can't do the math. Have the kids do it. Because we got gifted kids in this community. We gotta recognize them. That's what I wanted to let y'all know.
Thank you. Thank you. On behalf of the board, we appreciate your comments. Thank you. Thank you. So now we will transition to our superintendent's comments. Superintendent Soler?
Good evening, board members, community, those watching us via livestream. Before I get into the meat of my comments, do want to provide the board an update regarding budget. So I'm gonna have our CFO, Mr. Galuli, come up and share an update on the budget process. Obviously, we will, the budget will be on the agenda moving forward till we go to the big prime time in May and till the board adopts it later this month. So just want to give Terry, if you wanna, there's some slides in board docs if you have them, but they're also in the screen in front of you as well.
Hello.
All right, Terry?
Yep.
Go ahead.
Thank you. When we met last week, I reviewed all the FTEs, the dollar amounts of the budget. But there were some questions during the meeting I wanted to clarify for this meeting and also review, as I mentioned at the last meeting, was our fund balance. Can you move that up?
Is it on the, the button on the side on? Terry's got it like push up, yeah.
Always challenged with this.
Try it again.
There you go. Thank you.
Oh, that was you. You tricked us. You can go ahead and skip those two, the next two slides. Yep, right there. Try it now, Terry. All right. Just let Brian know.
Yeah. So as you know, we try to develop the budget to include our budget development mission. I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but basically provide the opportunity for all students the opportunity of social and emotional well-being, high academic standards, and a safe learning environment, incorporating the district's Board of Education's vision, values, and goals. And we don't want to have to worry about the financial impact at the buildings, have them worry about where the money's coming from. So we develop a budget where, moving forward, they can worry about the educational process. Next slide, please. What I wanted to review with you, which we didn't get touched base last meeting, is the fund balance. This is our current balance of our fund balance at the end of the twenty twenty-two fiscal year. The reserves, the assigned and the unassigned fund balance. And as you can see, the fund balance reserves need to be set up by the Board of Education. They have been previously set up in prior years, and we fund them when money becomes available to use for future expenditures within the budget. The reason why I'm bringing this forward is, as we spoke about last week, to maximize the use of our federal funds that we're receiving due to the COVID pandemic. We're able to have the opportunity to look at each one of these reserve funds as we move forward during the current year and next year and see where we could allocate money towards these fund balance balances. And to make sure we have enough money in these for future planning, as we spoke about, sustainability of our current budget moving forward. When maybe the COVID funds are gone, how will we be able to do that? So this, by funding our reserve funds, there is no really formula or recommendations by the state, except for the recent retirement for the TRS system. They only allow you to do a percentage of payroll per year, and then they have a limit on how much you actually could fund that. That's only been out for three years, so we're not at that level yet because we've been restricted in how much we could put in there each year. But we will look at it prior to the end of this year and see if we could add more money to those. And all these other ones, you know, in the future, when we need these expenditures to pay for one of those areas, we could take the money from these fund balances and offset any revenue on the budget for these amounts. As you see at the bottom there, the capital reserve, the five point seven, that's part of the three hundred million dollars that we recognize for the money that we will not receive for state. We'll utilize the five point seven million dollars. And then the repair reserve, that's gonna be, this was at the end of last year. During the current year and next year, we'll utilize those funds to pay for the repair reserves that we identified when we had the public hearing a few months ago. Next slide, please. The assigned funds, these are monies that are committed for a purpose in the next following year, appropriated for subsequent year's expenditures. That's how we balanced the budget at the end of last year. The unappropriated is basically our encumbrances at the end of last year when the service has not been performed yet, where the items have not been ordered. We had an open PO. We had about five point two million last year that the work was gonna be ordered the following year. That will be adjusted this year, at the end of this year, for any POs we have opened, we have not received a service, or if we have not performed or received the goods. Unassigned balance funds, that's the amount that we have available that's unrestricted. It doesn't have to be used for a designated purpose. And that's that four percent maximum allowed of our subsequent budget. As you see at the end of twenty twenty-one, we had two point four eight percent. This year, we, last year, I should say, to twenty twenty-two, we had a four percent, nine point five million. So basically, overall, we have a fund balance of about approximately ninety-five, ninety-five point five million. That represents about twenty-seven percent of our total budget, projected budget. So it just gives you an idea, I'm sorry, not twenty-seven, seventeen percent of our total budget. So it gives you an idea how much savings, you could say, we have for future funds, and hopefully we'll be able to add more to these. We have to stay within the limit of the four percent of the unrestricted, but we could potentially add more money to, with your approval, to move on the savings in the current year budget to those reserve and assigned funds. Next slide, please. Also, as we mentioned last meeting, we have the increase in the foundation aid. And as a requirement for New York State education, if we receive, any school district in New York State, if they receive ten percent or ten million dollars more in foundation aid over this three-year phase, we have to do what they call the foundation aid increase survey. Basically, it has to be submitted to the state by July first for our plan to how to utilize the additional funds in the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. We went over last meeting, like we, we recognize that pretty much everything we recognize in the district that we believe that we need is in our current budget. But what we're gonna do, because they want participation by all stakeholders, we're gonna submit, it's gonna be different than previous year's surveys because we're not really looking for input on how the money should be expended, but where we, they think we could approve and how we could do that to increase graduation rates, eliminating the achievement gap, reducing class sizes. A lot of these initiatives are already taking place throughout the district. So maybe ways that we can get ideas and implementing a plan based on the feedback that we get from that. That'll be on Let's Talk. We'll put it on social media, and it should be out there next week. It doesn't really have to be part of the budget conversation because pretty much like we went over last week, everything's pretty much funded in the current budget. So it just gives us an eye, other idea of public input and other stakeholders' best way to roll out these programs.
We, we were required to do this last year, so we did the same thing last year. Except last year, we did a traditional survey. This year, we're saying, give us ideas to these items that already exist. Say, what can we do differently? So that, that's the difference.
Next slide, please, Brian. Kane Elementary, you know, just a little historical, and if anybody has any questions. I just want to go through what we're currently doing with the building. We have been leasing Kane Elementary since two thousand and seven through two thousand and twenty-two. If you remember, last year, you renewed it for one year. Anytime you enter into a lease agreement, you have to have voter approval. We are looking, development, we have been speaking with St. Luke's Church, who controls the lease on the building, to purchase that property. I don't know if Hannibal wants to speak to that part.
Yeah, so when we presented a Schenectady revitalization plan, one of the things that was incumbent is like the Lincoln, Kane, what do we do with one building we own, one building we don't, they're a block apart from each other. The recommendation was that we keep Kane in our envelope, but do we continue to lease it or do we look to purchase it? And so both Terry and I met with St. Luke's Parish, yes, Father Sopo, and the folks on his, the executive cabinet of St. Luke's Parish. And, you know, we're at the point now where we think purchasing is probably the best option. If you look at it, we have fifteen years of about two hundred and something thousand dollars we've, we've spent to lease it. We could have
It's about three point seven million, we expect.
Yeah, we could have owned it for that, for that amount of money. And so we think it's more fiscally responsible to, to put a proposal out when we do our, our vote in May, to, to ask permission from the community to just purchase it. And then we can do the full enhancements to the building. And, you know, we had proposed some things like potentially an expansion, adding some more classrooms. You know, part of the building we can't even use right now. And so, because it used to be kind of the nun section. And
The convent.
The convent, yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I don't want to say the wrong word. I think yesterday I said the coven, and I'm like, that was wrong. So, so we want to be able to maximize it, and for us, the footprint is really nice. And if you've ever been there, it's really tough at dismissal and arrival every day, and it just puts a strain on us. So we really can't do the enhancements needed to provide a safe entry for buses, a safe entry for parents to pick up and drop off. In fact, they drop off kind of like behind the campus from where the front of the building is on Albany. So those are things that we would like to address if we owned the building. It makes more sense. But this is something we would have to ask for the community permission to go out and purchase. But what we want to show you tonight is that we are building in this cost into it so that still keeps us at zero for the regular budget and also zero for any of the capital work that, that we do. So if you have questions, now's the time, but Terry could continue to, to go over it. It is a strong community. We have an amazing principal who's leading it. She asks us all the time, what's my future look like? Am I still living here or not? We have a board member who has a child there, so.
She's not supposed to live there.
Well, she works so much that she, like, she lives there. But even her main office, and there's things that we want to do there, secure vestibule. They don't really have a secure vestibule. So there are things that we want to do that just, if we want to do those improvements, it just makes more sense that we own it. And what I would tell you is, when we own it and we make those improvements, we get, we get aid on those. We receive building aid on those expenses and repairs. Where, as if it's leased, we have a landlord technically, and there's gotta be things in the agreement that, that we do. Although we did replace, you know, the boiler and, in twenty fifteen, which was a big expense. So I don't know if you want to handle questions or Kathy, yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just a couple, Terry, is the property all the way to Bigelow practically? There's one house I know or something on that corner, and then back to where Parsons used to be. It, it is the
Yeah, it's the whole parking lot, front lawn, back, playground, everything, yes.
It's everything in and around that place, okay?
It's a great footprint.
Just one, I, I, it's a large footprint, and, and we recognize that some years ago.
Can we clarify, though, is, does that also include the patch of grass we all drive over to get to the school?
There's been conversation about that patch of grass.
Yeah, so that, that patch of grass, we, we would, it would be ours, but the side belongs, I believe, to Metroplex or something. They have the responsibility of the
Coming in from
Of the coming in from the side.
From Bigelow.
Yeah.
Bigelow, because
Yeah, so they would have to, they would probably put a fence up.
The, the other clarification I
Or maybe they give it to us.
I wanted, the two million dollars, is that come out of the capital reserve or the repair property?
No, right now, what we're gonna do is, it wasn't proposed in last week's budget, but I will put a line in item four, cap, transfer to capital project, capital fund, two million dollars. So the savings from this year in our current budget, I will put that in the reserve of appropriate, not even a reserve, it's appropriated for future expenditures. So we'll have a line in there for two million. That'll be our revenue source. Savings from this year budget to use for the expenditure to buy the two million in next year's.
An increase to the capital reserve, or you're gonna make it a separate
It'll be, yeah, it'll be part, like allocating the funds from unrestricted to appropriate it for future expenditures. And then the future expenditure would be the purchase price of the building. So it really doesn't have, the, the voters will vote on it as if you're setting up a capital reserve. It's, it's the same step, basically. If you put it in the capital reserve and then move it out of the capital. So they're, they're voting on that, yeah.
Brian, can you go back a slide so that the community can see what we're talking about? Two more. Right?
Yep, right there.
One more?
Nope.
Was that the right one?
Yeah, go back one more.
All right.
Go ahead.
This is what Kathy
Ahead to. Right there. Yeah, so see where it says appropriated for subsequent year's expenditures? We would have like two point two million there if that was last year. So next year, the expenditure would come up and would buy the building and the expense line. So you're basically saying, all right, it's just not considered a capital project reserve.
Okay, and last on our, our request, I guess, as, because we have a number of things that people are gonna need to vote on in May, I wonder if we could have a summary of all of the things, because we've got this, we've got the capital project, we've got use of the repair funds, we've got the budget itself, BOE. We have a lot of things to vote on this year, so.
Yeah, everything will be listed at the budget adoption next week. And that's why I kind of, if you go to the next slide, please. Why can't you? One more?
To, to support your
Yeah, right there. So you see in red, budget proposition, May sixteen. So this will be a budget proposition to vote on, to get the approval of the purchase of Kane for two million dollars.
Yeah, well, we'll work out as a summary sheet to kind of clarify for the board so you can know the various, that's what I think Kathy's asking for. Just an abbreviated summary of each proposition and explanation. Just some clarity around it as they go out and are stewards of the budget.
Yes. Next slide, please. Also, you know, Kathy asked about the constitutional debt limit, so I just wanted to review that in case anybody didn't get a clear understanding how that works. But I also want to recognize, last night, we had our first, I guess, public session to speak about the capital project. Tomorrow night, we'll be at Central Park at six. Hannibal will be presenting then. And then Tuesday, April eighteenth, and Thursday, April twentieth. Welcoming the community to come out, ask any questions, review the project, and answer any questions they may have in regards to the actual project or any funding sources. Again, this is another budget proposition to vote on the approval of the capital project, May sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. And the reason why I have what the constitutional debt limit in there, part of the wording of the resolution and the proposition will basically state, like, New York State only allows you to borrow a percentage of your tax value over the last, average tax value over the last five years. Five percent for a small city school district. If you plan on doing that, you need sixty percent voter approval of the capital project. So if we recognize that wording within the proposition for them to approve the capital project, the next step would just be getting approval from the consent of the regents and the state controller, and then we could borrow more money past the amount of the land, tax parcels within the district. So it's approximately like two point nine billion. Five percent of that is like a hundred and forty-seven million. We're doing a three hundred million dollar project. We're not borrowing it all at once. But eventually, over the terms of the borrowing, we will be above that, and it's just some formality. Usually gets approved by the regents and the state controller. That will allow us to borrow more, but we need sixty percent voter approval. So if you put it in part of the resolution proposition, it will really be no, you know, hidden, nothing that we're saying later, and it makes the process easier. Kathy mentioned in the past that wasn't done properly, so they had an issue, so we want to be transparent.
There's a question. I don't know the
Yeah, well, it, it ended up being a problem for the business office, but we just want to be transparent, make sure people are aware that, you know, we are aware of this, and this is a constitution, and it only really applies to, like, some percentages are larger for the big five and the rural districts, but we have a five percent limit on the tax base. So it doesn't mean that we can't do it, it's just that we have to be transparent and let them know that we will be doing it.
Do you, do you need to cite the numbers that you just mentioned, the two point nine billion?
No, because that, it changes, because the two point nine, yeah, because the tax will change. And so it's like the average of the last five years, so that will change, so you don't put it in your proposition. You just say that we need voter approval to, of sixty percent to exceed the debt limit when necessary.
Okay, let's see if anyone else has any questions, any other board members?
And we'll make that clear on the summary.
Kathy, do you want to ask any more, or more questions?
No, no, that was it with regard to this, yeah.
So just to be clear, we will move forward with, working with the attorneys, and that won't happen until after we get community support of purchasing Kane. But that will be a line item, asking the community for permission to purchase Kane in addition to approving our budget, so.
And three hundred million.
You confused me.
Yeah, so, so just to clarify, we have the revitalization plan will be a proposition, the three hundred million. The purchase of Kane will be a separate proposition.
Right.
And the, the approval of our regular school budget will be a proposition.
Right.
So just wanna make sure that you understand that they are three separate items.
Right, do they need to approve the constitutional debt limit in?
It will be part of the region, it'll be part of the wording of, of the capital project, three hundred million with the.
Yeah, it won't be a separate.
Yeah, we have all the word, yep. It'll be all, yep, but there'll be three different ones.
Sorry, and I just have an, I wonder, um, did we consider other options for Kane? Cause I know we preliminarily had some conversations on the board, but I was just wondering, is, is this what we want, we want the building, is that what, okay.
Yeah, there's two things, one is the, the, the land, the plot of land is also, I think, important for us to do some really good things there. Um, we have Fulton is the only empty space. And it, and it's, and it still needs work and it's not, you know, ADA compliant and there's still some challenges there. And for me, it's like you're taking that community and you're forcing them to another part of the, the city. And, and we, you know, we did some good jobs last year with, with our reserve funds and we put ourselves in a pretty good position. And, you know, the foundation aid is being fully funded, now's the time to do something like this. Uh, I know in the past, it would not have been the right time. But I would say that the, the district for fifteen years has leased it and we're going out for two million dollars. So we technically could have owned it.
Yeah, like if we walked away now, you know, we're losing the classroom space and the money that we already expended in there, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Next slide, please, Brian. Did you, uh, go back one maybe, did you miss one?
Nine, number nine, go back one.
Oh, no, it's not in there, all right. Yeah, it was, um, it was added to, zero, um, tax levy, I just wanna make that clear. Um, again, all those things we just talked about has no tax impact. Just wanna make sure that we're clear on that for the taxpayers, like the fifth year in a row when we have not had a tax increase. So, um, just wanted to be clear on that. And if there's any, next slide, please. So just moving forward, what are we looking at? Um, April nineteenth, the next board meeting will be our budget adoption by the Board of Education to support the educational process and the purchase of Kane and any other adjustments. And if we do have any, we will go over those with you. But anything we add to the budget now, um, you know, we're working on this year's closing out. It would just be basically savings this year, money that we'll allocate to use for next year's, the purchases of any other areas that we see necessary. You mentioned like last meeting, you know, can we sustain this? It's important that we do it now, you know, you know, we have the funds and our students deserve the best. Um, and so why wait and worry about four, five, six, seven years, coming out of the pandemic for the last two years? So to fund what we can do now and also be mindful in the future that we could sustain it. So that's why a lot of these, it looks like a bigger budget, but we could definitely sustain it. Um, as everybody knows, the New York State budget was not approved by April first. So we're still waiting on final numbers on that. Um, they did extend it, I believe, to April tenth. So they will be working on that next year, I mean, um, next week. So hopefully, you know, we'll have our final numbers moving into that, so there's not that unknown that if we do. But hopefully, there hasn't been any word about education, so I think that should be safe as far as everything I have read. And then fund balance, we just went over, you'll have a better idea, we're closing out like April thirteenth of, you know, future purchases for the school year. Gives us a better idea where, where we will stand and what we could fund. And we'll work at that through like May and June also. Um, May third is our budget hearing and then May sixteenth is the budget vote. Also on the, you know, just to add another thing to the ballot, there are three positions on the board that will be open, that will also be voted on. Um, I believe those are due by the nineteenth, too, if anybody wants to run for those positions.
The twenty-sixth.
April twenty-sixth.
Different for small cities.
Always ask Martha.
Ask Martha, April twenty-sixth. All right, any questions?
Slide eleven was the tax levy, by the way.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, you missed it?
It's next, it's the last, it's.
Oh, got put in the wrong place?
I minded it.
Go ahead, go to the next one, there you go. Yeah, so this is again, just a reminder, cause I always think it's important that, you know, there, I've had questions from, you know, we had, uh, Andrew, uh, from the Daily Gazette tour some of the buildings with us yesterday, he attended, and he had asked a question, you know, and how could we trust, how could we believe that, you know, how does this community believe that we're really not gonna harm them? And the only thing I could tell you is, we haven't harmed them since twenty eighteen, nineteen, we've not increased taxes to this community. And we've been able to do some innovative things. And so I know there's sometimes a fear that, that, that it's gonna be placed on the community. Um, and I would just ask this, keep trusting us, we've been working really hard to, to build some sustainability. Um, our programmatic costs are pretty much staying the same per se. And some of this additional dollars that we're getting in the foundation aid, we're trying to maximize, again, purchase of Kane, uh, and not put that burden. Cause once you buy it once, then you own it, and then it's just maintaining it. And repair reserves, and again, we will get aid on those expenses moving forward. And we have like a ninety-eight percent state aid rate for our facilities, which means for every dollar, you know, we give back, we, it really costs us twenty cents. Thanks, Terry.
Thank you, thank you.
And Brian, we'll get you next here for passionate people, but. Uh, some additional comments, uh, just to go with, with Terry, thank you, Terry. Uh, so I, um, uh, first wanna just thank the board, I, I missed our, our work session. Uh, the last time we were together, I, I had an opportunity to participate, uh, in a hundred superintendents marching on Capitol Hill uh, around some various priorities for continued funding, um, special education, mental health support. And so I just wanna thank the board for allowing me to, to be a part of that, it was really cool, it was the first time that, uh, the Association of Latino Administrators and Superintendents and NAVSE, which is the National Black School Educator, came together, so it was the first time they had a hundred. Uh, the, the goal was to have a hundred superintendents of color, uh, go on the Capitol and speak to our representatives. So I do wanna thank the board and apologize for my absence, but I know you were in good hands with the team and Deputy Superintendent Rutnick. We've been talking about how excited we, that I was for this opportunity to put a group of kids together. Uh, and that happened, uh, last week, we were able to meet with, for the first time, our superintendent student advisory council, you may have seen some of those kids. We're still looking to add a couple more kids, make sure every school has some representation. So if you're listening and you wanna be a part of that, uh, please reach out to district office, Deputy Superintendent Rutnick, Mr. DiCaprio for elementary schools, Mr. Omealy for our secondary schools. Uh, but we had a great meeting and the focus was to just create a forum for kids to have voice, ask us the questions that they are always burning to ask us. And they, I love the thing about kids, they are honest and, uh, uh, you know, they're fearless, they're honest. And what I loved about what we set up was, a lot of our older kids sat with the elementary kids to kinda get them out of their shell a little bit, cause they were, you know, a little intimidated. And they did love our bacon at breakfast, that was a hot item. They love the bacon and they're asking now for a lunch meeting, so we will have a, a lunch meeting with the students. Again, more about them on our, in my weekly brief last week, uh, but please know that, um, we're looking forward to getting more. And next month's conversation, uh, we're gonna be meeting and we're gonna be talking about our code of conduct, our code of character. We're gonna invite, uh, Assistant Superintendent Tote Freeman, uh, Mr. Russo, to talk about what they wanna see with safety, climate suspensions. And really have a focus group with our kids, uh, provide them that voice. I, I do wanna make sure that I don't, um, uh, send this message lightly. There's been a lot of calls around the country around the swatting that's going on. Um, just recently this week, we had more schools in the region, uh, that were called with threats. Some of them were emailed with various, uh, ransom threats. If you don't do certain things, uh, we will, we will, you know, unfortunately blow up your school. Uh, we were not a target of that, but doesn't mean we won't be a target of that. And so what I will tell families is, you know, continue to, uh, monitor social media, be close to your phone, we do have a variety of ways to alert you. Um, I know this is hard, you gotta try to trust us to communicate. If we don't communicate, then believe it didn't happen. We got a lot of calls, kind of like questioning, like, you know, we're hiding something. And so I wanna make sure that, please know, we're taking it very serious and I, I don't wanna overlook that because it is a really tough time in our country when it comes to these threats targeting to schools. Schenectady Police Department works with us directly. And what you don't know is each of our principals has a radio that allows them to have access to, uh, the incident command center and to, uh, Schenectady Police, which is new because of this, uh, ingrowing threat. Uh, last night, we held our first capital, uh, project public information meeting. Uh, tomorrow night is at Central Park. Uh, again, encourage anyone to come, learn more about what we're doing or what we're thinking about doing with our schools. Nothing's been decided until we get permission from the community to move forward with our, uh, capital project. But again, the focus is here to revitalize and reignite some energy around our facilities to support the amazing, uh, students that we serve in the community. Uh, on Monday, we held a recruitment day here at the high school. Uh, we came out with seventeen candidates moving on to the second round, and so we're excited. And so, uh, we'll continue to create opportunities to recruit teachers, uh, support staff, psychologists, counselors. Uh, and we have a ton of jobs posted, uh, currently on our district website. Uh, since the last time we met was in early March, I do wanna make an opportunity to, to recognize our, uh, second year of the Schenectady Promise. We held that event in mid-March, I wanna thank our partners at, uh, SUNY Schenectady. And we also added a new partner, and that is Ellis Medicine. And, and they are going to be giving an opportunity for many of our students to go right to employment and then look to upskill them right at Ellis to some of the jobs that may require a college degree. They're gonna be paying for tuition, uh, they're gonna be paying for the training. Um, Dr. Munro, uh, Mr. Milton both, uh, made the promise with me that day uh, to expand and give extraordinary opportunities for both students and families. Uh, and the cool thing about the promise, while we call it two point oh, is it applies to anybody in the household, not just the kid that's graduating. So we took that big step forward to say, you know, I challenged both Dr. Munro and Mr. Milton to say, what about an uncle? What about an aunt who lives with them that's looking to better their lives? Can they take advantage of it? And they said absolutely. And so now those families are also instantly admitted to SUNY Schenectady or they have a job opportunity for them at Ellis. Uh, I wanna congratulate one of our early college high school students over at Center City, at SUNY, at the SUNY Schenectady, uh, early college high school with us in partnership and our transfer. I think it's called the Schenectady Smart Transfer Early College High School Program. Uh, Pamela McCall always reminds me of that. Uh, he was been named to the All USA Academic Team. It is comprised of the nation's top community college students. He's one of only twenty college students from across the country, uh, who were named. He was chosen among two thousand four hundred students who were nominated for this recognition. He's the only student from New York State. He is a team member, uh, Parmesh, and I'm gonna say his last name wrong, so I apologize, Tacordio. Uh, Pa- Parmesh received a five thousand dollar scholarship, a special medallion. And he plans to transfer after he gets his associate's at SUNY Schenectady for a bachelor's degree in biology and then enter medical school to become a doctor. And so he went, I believe yesterday, they went to Denver, Colorado to receive the award, him and his mom were flown out, um, for the award and recognition. And you will see that in my brief, but I also wanted to make sure I gave him a shout out here tonight. So, yeah, we can shoot him, yep, thank you. A lot of talent, just like our spokesperson said, we have a lot of gifted students that sometimes we don't even notice. And Parmesh is definitely one of those students who's rising. Uh, this is also, a lot of recognitions this week, this is National Assistant Principals Week. So I'd like to give a shout out to each of our principals. Behind every great principal is a great assistant principal, is what I always say. Uh, because they gotta do all the other things that they, principal can't do. Um, they have a challenging job, they demonstrate leadership and support in all our schools. And they're also responsible for sometimes the non-fun things, uh, that happens in the school, but they do it with, uh, a smile and they show up every day for our success, so I wanna thank all of them. I also wanna thank, cause today is Paraprofessional Appreciation Day. And we know how important our pares are in our district, so I wanna appreciate the hard work of each of our pares. Um, I'd like to publicly say thank you to them because they do a variety of roles. We saw some of our passionate people nominated to them were pares. Uh, they support teachers, they support students, they support parents, they are often compassionate, motivating, patient, cooperative and so much more. So again, thank you to our paraprofessionals, and today is their appreciation day. And this week, oh, yeah, you can give it to them, yep. Couple more recognitions, again, a lot, lot goes on in April, I didn't, or March, April, I didn't realize it. Uh, this week is also National Library Week, uh, and we know we have an initiative here for Schenectady Reads. And so what better time to honor our librarians? Last year, we made a priority to try to add a librarian to all of our schools. These librarians not only help our, um, students check out books, but they build bridges between, uh, books, tablets, the passion of learning. Um, our lib, our librarians are media mentors, often who help students identify new interests, encourage them to expand their skillset and offer them a variety of resources. Our librarians also create spaces that reflect all of our students' identities. So please, please be sure to check out your library media center, uh, at each of your elementary schools and middle schools and at the high school. April, uh, you notice I have a blue pin on, is Child Abuse Prevention Month. Um, so many of our team members are wearing blue, I have a blue suit on as well. Um, to recognize the importance of child abuse prevention, uh, we all have a role in ensuring children have positive experiences and the families have the resources when they need them, before they are in crisis. So our communities need strong partners and strong foundations and our kids deserve nothing less than positive childhood experiences. And so hopefully, as we continue to bring awareness around Childhood Abuse Prevention Month, we can make sure that these things are prevented from occurring. The third quarter closes on April eighteenth, I wanna make sure our students and parents know that. That is just as we come back from break. So if you got any work to do, you got tomorrow. And hopefully you can get hold of your teacher with email and finish any last minute assignments, cause April eighteenth is literally the day we come back after the break. Uh, New York Assessments are also gonna be starting when we return from break. Uh, I wanna, uh, thank of our principals, our teachers, our students, they're working really hard. Uh, I know there's always a variety of opinions around assessments. What I will say this, unfortunately, they do determine the labels that our schools get. And we don't wanna have schools be on receivership list or schools of improvement, so we've gotta engage in the game, participate and give our kids an opportunity to do well. And hopefully that will lift the overall ranking of our schools in our district. And again, we're gonna be looking for, hopefully, folks to participate, uh, starting in April, uh, around the ELA assessments. Uh, and again, that is a personal choice, so if you don't, then we understand and respect that as well. But as superintendent, I want you to participate. Uh, remind us, the Schenectady City School District Education Foundation Celebration will take place on April twenty-sixth at five thirty at Proctor's. Again, that's a really great night to recognize our Teachers of the Year, come together for a good cause, April twenty-sixth, five thirty PM at Proctor's. Our spring break steam camp is underway, so if you had a kid in the February steam camp, you know, uh, they'll be running grades one through five, beginning Monday of next week. Uh, and that, that'll actually run five days if I'm correct, Dr. Coto. We have a lot of fun activities planned, it'll be all hands on board, and so we're excited to do that. There is no school on Friday of this week, next week's spring recess, and we will see everyone back on Monday, April seventeenth, for the homestretch of the school year. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, Superintendent Soler. We will now begin with board comments and we will start with VP Nohalani.
Okay. Um, good evening, so I'm going to try to make my comments as quickly as possible. Um, but this weekend, this past weekend, I did have the pleasure of attending the National School Boards Association's two thousand and twenty-three Annual Conference with Board President Bernice Rivera and Board Member Kathy Lewis. Um, there were countless sessions, um, I couldn't even possibly, there were so many good, uh, sessions that were there, all, some of them happening, uh, simultaneously. Um, you know, you had stuff from cohesive team-based board to leveraging summer learning opportunities for academic success. So there was a lot of information for us to kinda take back, um, and obviously we wanna share. And, um, one of the sessions that really resonated with me, um, that we attended together was, uh, the session on self-care and conflict management. Um, the presenter was a Mary Vertakis, if I'm pronouncing it correctly. Um, she's, in my opinion, absolutely brilliant, we had an opportunity to speak with her after her session. Um, just truly gifted and has so much that she's giving back to her district. So, um, you know, essentially, her call to action in the session was for board members as leaders within the community to acknowledge the complex challenges, um, over the last couple of years, due to COVID and all of the things that, you know, happened when the world kinda just shut down. Um, and so it was important for her to kinda share that it's all right to take a step back and, and, you know, take care of ourselves and each other while we were going through it, because everyone stopped what they were doing to make sure that our children were safe and that they had what they needed. Um, so it was really, really good to listen to her, her speak and thoroughly enjoyed it. I also was invited by, uh, Shonda Blanks, um, here at the high school, um, this, this evening to attend the first Parent Empowerment Center Open House. Um, it was beautiful to walk in and see, there were so many, um, folks here just sharing information with the, the community of parents that had shown up. Um, and when I spoke with her, she said that this was a way of creating a village of support for our students and families and then obviously connecting them with resources. Um, so I believe Sickum was there, she says that the national grid will be coming in and things of that nature. So lots of information and she does wanna open it up, um, because again, she says it's a village of support for our students and families, um, to make sure that it's impacting not just the high school students, but also middle school and elementary. So I believe she said that they're going to, they meet monthly for planning and her hope is to have something like this, um, bi-monthly. Um, I have to also shout out, um, some of my peers. It's scary to say that twenty-five. It's scary to say that 25 years ago, Coach Gary Danola and team won the New York State Public High School Championship in Glens Falls. I was cheerleading, I wasn't on the team, but I was there, and the excitement and the, it was just electrifying, you know, because it was nice to see us win and to win in such a big way. So 25 years went quick, but Jakey Thomas, Jamar Sims, Willie Dean, Justin Hoffman, Patrick O'Connor, Kevin Owens, James Plowden, it was a pleasure getting to go to all of the games, and it was exciting to kind of cheer you guys on, so I just wanted to announce that, and that's it. Thank you.
I have a quick question, Superintendent Soler. The swatting, it's called swatting because these are duplicative calls, right? Like, it's this kind of script of fake threats to schools. None of them have been verified as actual, right? I mean, it's horrible and should not happen, but the reason we're seeing them is because they are these duplication that are happening.
Yeah, so the law enforcement has communicated that they have not found any of them to be credible, and they are the same message at multiple locations, so they, that's why they kind of call it swatting. But they're, I think it's more of a police term or something, swatting, and I'm not sure with the actual definition, but it has not been validated. Unfortunately, when we get these notifications, we can't, we can't treat it like that.
Right, of course.
So that's why I want to just make sure people understand that it's frustrating, because we know they're duplicative and they're impacting multiple communities, and there haven't been anything, like, specific or...
Each one of them is investigated.
Correct.
And, but just, I thought that was important.
And I think FBI is involved now, and multiple agencies are, for at least the ones that have been coming to the capital region.
Okay, thank you for that. I only have one thing, and it's actually horribly sad. So a community leader passed away recently, Mr. Rose, who, anyone that knows Belmont Pop Warner, you know him, and so to family, to friends, to football players in Schenectady, we were blessed, and we will forever honor his name and all that he did for this community and the children that have gone through that program and because that program still exists. So I just want to take the time to speak his name in this space, and that's all.
And just to know, if people don't know, but there's a food stand in his honor currently at, behind Mount Pleasant, where Belmont plays, and with our plans to redo that field this summer, we will be re honoring him, because we are going to move the stand to a more prominent place, so stay tuned.
Thank you, Jamaica. And we will transition to Prinsella.
Put some kind of accountability, put some kind of accountability in regards to cost at some point on those losses, and then if we do, what would be the threshold? So that's our conversation.
Okay. What we already do. And what we already have.
Yeah, so just to bring clarity to what Prinsella's saying is that, right now, we're exploring a policy that would create either some kind of cost structure or not, but that's what the board's going to have to make a decision on. There is a draft that's probably out there, you probably saw, but it's not, nothing that's board-approved, the board policy.
Okay.
And so right now, it's not in the policy.
I'm gonna go find the paper.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I guess where I signed something that said if lost, if...
Yeah, it may have said it, but it doesn't have any dollar values in it, and so we don't know what those would be. But yes, if lost or damaged, you would be responsible. But it's never been board-approved, which is the other problem that was prior, so we're trying to make sure, the district can't set policy like that, so we have to have the board do that. So what Prinsella wants the board to start thinking about is, is that the approach you want to take or not? Because when you get the first read, you will have that, and right now, that's where we've been struggling as a committee, is, you know, do we do that? Do we not do that? We know that, you know, costs of these things are, they're not free for us to buy, but how do we find a threshold? And we have some models that we think are reasonable, but just be look for that. And then tonight, you have a first read for one that's on security cameras, it's also equally important.
Thank you.
That's all.
Okay. Thank you, Prinsella. Erica?
No comment. You're welcome.
During the month of March, I would like to acknowledge, having attended the chef contest, and Anibal was one of the judges, and there were four chefs, student chefs, who presented their delicacies, and one was chosen and is in a national competition. I haven't heard anything about how that's gone, but I was glad that we were able to reinstate that since it had happened in 2019, or 2020, just literally days before we were shut down, so this was a good recurrence. I would also like to acknowledge the cast and crew and all of the help that they had, the performers who put on Little Shop of Horrors on the weekend of the 16th, 18th, I believe it was, and I thought it was tremendous, and I can see the growth in that program every single year. You know, there were hard acts to follow with Bill Ziskin's departure and passing, and we're stepping up, the whole crew is stepping up in there, so that was excellent. We had the, a meeting of the audit committee to review the internal audit last week, and I believe we will have a, we will be having a resolution about that next, at our next meeting. And we are going outside for additional, or not additional, but we're going, we've put out new bids for new auditors, and so we will be passing that resolution this evening in connection with that. Our audits went quite well, just as a heads up, we'll just give you that heads up about that. As Nohalani indicated, I was at the Orlando National School Boards Association. I also went to a huge number of sessions, and as she said, there's so many that are so excellent and simultaneously given that it's impossible to cover it. But one that stuck with me completely, I heard it in a session, and then I heard it as a closing keynote address from a man named Andrew Shire, and it's, it's a little scary, but it's something I think the education community needs to be aware of, and this is the advancements in AI technology and in what is called Chat GBT, Chat GBT. It was unbelievable, and what can be done with regard to that. And so I'm just putting it out there as something to know about, be concerned about. What was pointed out in the presentation I heard is that it took 200 years for all knowledge to double from about 1,800 to 2,000, give or take. It's taken two months, two months in the last four for it to more than double again, and that's largely because of the capacity of Chat GBT, I kept changing that initial, GBT, and I can't tell you what that stands for right now, but I'll look it up later. And so it's quite an amazing thing. So I want to wish everyone a happy spring break. I do think we honestly are going to hit temperatures in the 70s, and I will be grateful for that, and I hope that everyone is noticing. I did notice, I actually have tulip bulbs that are coming up as of yesterday, so please enjoy it. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy, and I have just three things that I just wanted to kind of share with the board. So Assemblyman Santa Barbara has a program that engages students from across the region to participate in the state Assembly Student Council, and our students actually, two students participated in it in 2018 and 2019. So it gives our community's youth a voice and opportunity to share what's happening to them. Meeting discussions range from talking about schools, school funding, what are our district's needs, as well as providing young people to a forum to share their thoughts about decisions affecting their learning. They engage in real-life legislative experiences by being in the hearing room and chambers to learn about the legislative process. So applications are available for high school students. Disregard what's on his website right now, because I double-checked, because it said that the deadline was in March, but it has been extended for a week. So this is for high school students, if they're interested in participating in this. And there's a great video, board members, if you want to take a look at his website and look at what those actual students from across the region have said about this program is really, it's impressive. Then I also wanted to mention to the board members that several of us, I know VP Nohalani and Jamaica and myself separately, we've been engaged in, or going to be engaged in girl circles at Mount Pleasant, and I just wanted to share just one of the girl circles, which I thought was very, very interesting. So my discussion was around, and it came very organically, about board goals and, or board responsibilities and roles. And in doing that, they said, oh, we want to share a lot of stuff with you. What's going on at Mount Pleasant? But what was interesting is that one of the young ladies that was part of the circle was also part of student council. So in the discussion, not only did they share some of the things that they would like to see, and it was really good, but we also discussed, okay, things are not good, but what are your suggestions to have, you know, to make some solutions towards the things that you're seeing? So in saying that, in the future, I'm going to send you all what they said, it's like a wish list in our board updates, but it was really good. It was really good. And then the last thing I want to mention, the NSBA that VP Nohalani and Kathy mentioned was really good, and there was a lot, so I'm just going to mention one thing, but I will share some additional information via email. But there was, there's this resource called, Strengthening Public Schools for Student Success, School Board Policies and Resolutions, and I'm going to give it now to the, I'll give it to the board, the policy committee, because they didn't have a lot, but what I will do is I will send the link to this. But what's awesome in here, there are samples of how to write certain policies. So different, you know, different policy samples, they have resolutions, you know, samples of how to write resolutions on different topics, so it was really, I think it will be really helpful. And again, I'll send that also to the rest of the board. And just one last thing about NSBA, many, even though we were not able to attend, like, there was over 100 sessions, they do have handouts. So what I might do is email you some of the titles, and then if you want the handouts, then I could send you the link, and you can get the handouts that way. Okay? All right? Okay, thank you, everyone. So we're going to continue. We will now have a presentation from Director of Technology, Ken McDermott. Welcome.
Just clerk?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm going to pause for a minute. Sorry, I'm sorry. Thank you. Yes. Martha, I apologize, district clerk, sorry.
It was your idea.
I know. Putting me on blast. No. It's okay, go ahead.
So as Mr. Gilley mentioned, both last week and this week, this year's budget vote and member, and board member election will be held on Tuesday, May 16th. Throughout the state, budget votes and elections always take place on the third Tuesday in May. We have three board positions up for election this year. Petitions are available on our website under How to Run for a Seat on the Board of Education. There is also a link to a publication outlining what prospective school board members should know. Or you can email me at morrism@schenectadyschools.org, or call me at 518-370-8100, extension 36905. And all of this information is available on the school's website, schenectadyschools.org.
Thank you, Martha, and before Ken comes up, I do want to just share with the board and the community, unfortunately, Prinsella Leary will not be able to run again due to the New York State Education Department Audit Group, called J.Cope, is that right?
Well, it was a state.
It was a decision.
It was a decision that those that are employees of the New York State Education Department, they cannot sit on a school board. So I just wanted everyone to be aware of that, and we'll talk more about it in the future, but, so unfortunately, Prinsella will not be able to run again.
We'll give her the right send-off, but we are going to enjoy having her, work her hard on Policy Committee till she leaves. She's got to get that Chromebook policy done for us, but we're going to miss her.
And it's been a pleasure serving for my students, so thank you.
No pressure, Ken.
I know.
You're next, now.
Thank you, Ken. You're up.
Thank you for the opportunity to present on behalf of the IT Department. One thing I do want to mention, though, as I go through my presentation, and we talk about some of the things that we've done, is that I want to be very clear that it's just not the IT Department. We've done a lot of very positive work, but it's been a collaboration with many of the different departments and agencies that I work with. So tonight, I'd like to talk a little bit about our mission, talk a little bit about the department, kind of where we've been, some of the things that we've done, and then have a discussion about some of the things that we have on the immediate roadmap, and then have an opportunity to talk about how we protect the district from cyber threats, and then protect our students and staff as well. All of our decisions are driven by the vision of the district. We use this tagline every day in all of our discussions, everybody counts, everybody learns, and as we work through everything that we do, we are always focusing on the pillars. I really think that, as I kind of reflected on a lot of the work that we've done, the two that really stand out to me are the passionate people, you'll see in a second. We're going to take a look at the staff that we have now in the IT Department, which is comprised of a lot of different components, and talk about where we were two years ago. It's pretty significant, and the other piece is the effective systems and equitable resources. So, as I mentioned a minute ago, our org chart, this is where we're at now. When I got here in the fall of '21, I came as a resource from NAREC to help manage some projects, and at that time, things were not very smooth. Our network was crashing daily, internet really didn't work, our Wi-Fi was not even remotely reliable, and it was kind of all hands on deck. One of the things that really helped us out, though, is the commitment of the district in bringing in CTS services from NAREC. Again, that's kind of how I got here, to help shepherd that process along, but since that time, well, when I got here, there were five technicians in the district, there was one director, we had a secretary, and we hired out to a vendor actuar for kind of what I refer to as phone a friend, so that we had support. That's not nearly enough for a district of 17 buildings. So we've done very well to build out, we've brought in resources from NAREC. NAREC has subcontracted out some of the work to Actuar and another company called CB20, and then we have our local employees as well. So now, including myself, I think we're up to 19 people that manage a district of 17 buildings, which is much more reasonable. So the commitment to bring in CTS services, I think was a great move, and the other thing I want to mention, too, is that there's a lot, there's names up there that say NAREC next to them. There's a whole army of people back at NAREC, over at the 900 Building and up in Plattsburgh, that are also part of our team. They work with us remotely and support all of what we do. So our mission, our mission is supporting student learning, innovation, and engagement by providing students and staff equitable access to robust, reliable, and safe technology and communication systems. Listed out a lot of the things that lead into this, things that kind of come under our charge. The one thing that I really want to note is that we do know that when we say equity, we're not just talking about the same, or, you know, we know that different students need different things because they need support in different ways. And a lot of what we do is, we're always thinking about safety, but we're putting systems in place that are going to protect our students, protect our data, but we also recognize that we need to get out of people's way and let them be productive as well. And then finally, I feel it's very important that we build these systems that are sustainable... And then finally, I feel it's very important that we build these systems that are sustainable, reliable, but also fiscally responsible. So that's something that we're always thinking about. So a little bit about what we support in the district. First and foremost, we support our customers, students and staff, making sure that they have working systems and they have the, the tech support that they need. Listed out some of the different types of things that we, we support, obviously computers, personal devices, things, things of that nature. I put some numbers in there so you could get some appreciation of about roughly how many devices we have. We support over 650 classrooms with AV equipment, 300 printers. You can see the list. Our data center has server farms. We, we support over 80 servers. We have five firewalls and 112 switches across the district, a lot of maintenance, a lot of upkeep. This year, this summer, we put in a new phone system. We have roughly 1,300 phones that we maintain, public address systems in each of the buildings. Physical security is something that we've done a lot of work on in the, in the last year with Jeff Russo and his team. And then cloud services, those things like Google and such. So recent projects, so I, I, when I say recent, I mean since I got here, really. So I came into a lot of projects going on, and I'm used to running projects, but I think we're, we're typically running two or three at a time. So, so we've been hopping. Let's see, as I came in, we were in the process of upgrading our network, both wired and wireless. As I mentioned, there were a lot of difficulties when we first got here. We were able to circle the wagons, get the resources in. We were able to get that up and running, make it much more robust and reliable. At that, in the summer of '21, we also refreshed all the technology in the classrooms. We replaced all the PCs, a lot of the projectors and Elmos and things like that in the building or in the, the classrooms. We did a project where we surveyed all of our servers, and we found that there were many servers that were running on operating systems that were no longer supported. So we created a hit list, we went through those, and we upgraded all of our servers. That's a, that's a key piece for making sure that we're mitigating any cyber threats. ClassLink, this is probably one of the more significant things that we've done, and this is one of those projects, when I say we worked with a lot, with other people, there were several departments in this that, that worked along with us. But what ClassLink does is it automates the user accounts and creations in our system. So we have Envision, which has all of our HR information, and then we have F and A Campus, which has our student information. Those two systems are the gold standard. Everything has to be accurate in those. So with ClassLink, we're able to pull information from those two databases, and it takes a look at who is an active person in the district. And when somebody becomes active, it automates the creation of their accounts, and then when they become inactive, it, or not deletes, but disables their accounts. This was huge. When, when I started, we had over 1,600 account, I called it the Hotel California Effect. We had over 1,600 accounts that were still active, that people were no longer heal, here. So they came, but they never left, right? So that was a real significant thing. That also kind of propagated into our, our security because when somebody's enabled in the system, it also activates their badge. When they're disabled, it deactivates their badge, so those people no longer have access to our buildings as well. So far-reaching. And then on the instructional side of the house, ClassLink also has Launchpad. Launchpad is a single sign-on solution where we can push out all the resources, the kids log into this one site. It's got links to all their resources, and there's a single sign-on, so teachers aren't wasting tons and tons of time trying to get kids logged into different platforms with 15 different passwords. So that was, that was a really big project. Security cameras, worked with Jeff Russo and his team. We switched out our security camera system and as well as our card access system, working in cooperation with Day Automation. We, we adopted a new ticketing system to be in alliance with NAREC. With Dr. Koto's team, we set up the esports lab and got the esports team off the ground. In the summer, I mentioned, last summer, we switched over our phone system to a new Cisco VoIP system. And then this year, whether people like it or not, I think most of them are pretty happy with it. We made the migration from Outlook to Gmail, which some may, may not think that's a significant thing, but if you think about where your threats are, your, your vectors of threats for people breaching your systems, most of those come by way of email. So eliminating one system, going to two, doing a good job with that one is a positive step in that direction. And it's a lot less confusing for all of us that we're using two different email systems as well. Another thing we did was, as you know, we changed our domain name. That was one of the first things that Superintendent mentioned to me when he asked me to take over. We've created a partnership with, between Schenectady, NAREC, and a company called Aspire to create an infosec team. I'll talk a little bit more about that in a few minutes. We helped in, implement the kiosk system in the high school for checking students in. And then working with Brian Dangler's team, we've got it, we got a grant for an energy management system, BERT, so we've got that up and running. And then this year, we added on the additional campuses of Schenectady Community College and Proctor's Theater, and I think we've got a couple other sites we're going to be lighting up pretty soon, too. So there's still a lot to do, obviously. Some things that we have planned, this summer, we've already purchased and are planning to install interactive panels in 227 classrooms. We, we anticipate expanding that to hit more classrooms during the school year next year, depending upon how, how far the budget will reach for us. But that's a major initiative. I mentioned that we, we replaced or renewed all this, the switching equipment and the wireless access points. There's some design work that wasn't done, so we're also going to be working on redesigning the network so that we increase some security measures and also make the, the network a little bit more efficient. Smart Schools Bond Act, we have a lot of, we have a pretty significant, significant amount of money left there. So we are targeting some infrastructure work to be done in, in that respect. Our network infrastructure, we have a lot of very old cabling in our buildings, the data cables. They, a lot of the new devices not only transfer data but also power, and the old wires don't carry enough power to support the wireless access points and things like that. So we need to re-cable a lot of the buildings. We also have fiber in the buildings that needs to be tested, re-terminated, and replaced where needed. So we plan on doing that work. More and more things are running on our network. Our phone systems are completely on our network now. If we lose power, we don't have our phone system. So another thing that we're looking at as part of Smart Schools is adding generator power within the buildings. And then with funds that we might, may have, we will also look to reach more classrooms with additional instructional technology. Project that we're currently working on actually is a managed print solution, working with the vendor, copiers and printers and things like that, takes specialty training for repairs and whatnot. We're starting into a contract with National Business Equipment to take over the break-fix on our systems is also, as well as providing consumables like toners and things like that automatically. We had an audit. We, I really didn't need the audit to know that we have a problem with asset management. This was a, it's kind of a compounding thing. I think COVID was a big player here because during COVID, a lot of equipment was purchased, people left, devices just got sent out to buildings, and there wasn't really a plan. So that is a major push for us. We've already purchased a software that we're starting to onboard. That's going to be a major initiative for us in the coming year. And then a formal obsolescence plan. I think this is really, really important, especially when we talk about the sustainability. We have to do this in a fiscally responsible way. So that's something that we need to work on as far as creating a plan that, where we don't have everything obsolescing at the same time. And then this, the, you're going to be hearing from teaching and learning in the tech coaches next month. We've got three new positions with tech coaches. They're doing a tremendous job. I meet with them weekly. They are a huge asset to our department, and we are very committed to supporting them because they're the link that we have to the classroom and where everything actually has to take place. So that's something that we want to continue to build upon. Okay, just kind of a snapshot of where we are with technology in the classroom as we speak. Every classroom is, is configured with a PC, a projection unit of some sort, as well as an Elmo. They, some of them have different configurations, but that's the, the basic configuration for the classroom. And then the students at the elementary school, we have one-to-one devices, but they stay in the classroom in carts, they don't go home. We do have-
For the, for the younger guys, for the younger students, let's go off.
We have no batteries.
Teacher voice. Yeah, he went, I think he went to the restroom.
Teacher voice, yep. With another piece of ClassLink is that we were able to do QR codes. QR codes are great for the lone guys. They can use the camera, their Chromebooks, they hold up a QR code. Again, they don't have to remember a password to log in. So we have that set up for the students at the elementary, pre-teacher one levels, and then at the secondary level, we have, we have one-to-one devices that are assigned to go home. They also have Launchpad that delivers their resources to them. I mentioned that normally as part of the ClassLink piece, where they have single sign-ons to get to their resources. And then also at the secondary level, we also have some computer labs for specialty areas like art technology and, excuse me, computer science and business. And then we also have a number of devices that are specialty devices for students with accountability, special accommodation. Okay, so I talked a little bit about this earlier, mitigating cyber threats. This is a, this is a big undertaking, and it's a coordinated effort between a lot of people. For starters, we have our crew here at Schenectady. We're always taking a look at how we're setting up things, making sure that we're keeping traffic away from things that it shouldn't have on the network. And then we also partner with NAREC. NAREC has a whole team that helps us monitor what's going on in our network, what traffic is coming in and out. And then through NAREC, we also have a partnership with a company called Aspire. And part of this whole setup is we have software that runs both in the cloud, and we have software that runs on our computers. And these are next-gen applications that actually look for behavior. It uses artificial intelligence, it looks for behavior. It used to be that they looked for signatures. And the problem with the signature is you have to know what it looks like to be able to, to detect it. But with these softwares, it looks for behaviors, it looks for things that look suspicious. There's databases of nefarious IP addresses. Anything going to that gets blocked. Thank you, sir.
So hopefully I won't shout too loud now. But so that, we have this arrange, or relationship with both NAREC, Aspire, and I, and our IT department. Things that get flagged, they notify us. We work either here or with BOSI's to mitigate things that are detected. But as far as our, our network here, and this is a very, very simplistic illustration of what we have, but we have, between the internet and our network, we have a firewall. The firewall is there to block certain types of traffic, and it also is able to detect things coming in and out of the network. Over on the right, we have Cisco Umbrella. Cisco Umbrella actually works out in the cloud. So even if you're not on-site, we're able to see your traffic on your device, devices that are owned by the district, and identify things that could be threats. But again, this is one of those things, we can't do it alone. We need partners to do it and do it effectively. And then as far as how we protect our students, I know Andrew Tote-Freeman has talked about Gaggle here before you. Gaggle is one of the tools that we use that uses AI, basically. It takes a look at documents, communications, things like that, that students create, and it looks for things that, that might identify bullying, self-harm, violence, things like that, and it triggers. Now, they're alerted to them, and I don't know the details of this, but I know that the district is starting to work with the Schenectady Police Department because they get notifications in the middle of the night where they need, you know, somebody may be an imminent threat of hurting themselves, they can dispatch somebody to the house and help deal with that potential threat. So Gaggle's a big piece of this. Securely is a, is a tool that we use also for content filtering and also for classroom management. And then another thing that we do with respect to our Google domain is we have what's referred to a walled garden. With the exception of some of our oldest students, our students can't communicate in and out of our district. They can only email and share documents within the district, and that's to protect them. And I think that-
Is walled garden a technical term? Just curious.
You know, it, it, it's a, it's a common, it's a common term for, for that practice, yeah. So, open it up to questions?
Go ahead.
Um, how, there are some students that have complained.
Yeah.
It's not even my students, so that's really funny. Actually, at Mount Pleasant, that we've had, we have students that have gone to other schools and then they're in our district about the restrictions of internet uses, usage. Maybe this is too in the weeds, but you know, how do we decide? And really, this is because these kids are saying to me, we can't go to YouTube or, you know, whatever it is.
We can't go to Roblox.
Yeah, you can get to YouTube, but there are cer-, there's certain content on YouTube that is blocked, yes.
Right. I, I, again, maybe it's too in the weeds, but it's something brought up by the students of, you know, they're looking to have access, specifically the way it was presented to me is, they said freedom, that they felt they had more freedom other places, that they were more trusted other places, and they didn't feel as if they were trusted by us.
So shocking, but I've heard this before. Not, not only here, but my previous job. So if I, if I can, I'll just kind of give you a quick breakdown of how the content filtering is actually done. So Securely, I mentioned, we use for content filtering. In the early days, you could just, you could block everything and just allow people to, you would have to create a list of sites that you wanted to go and vice versa, right? You could not, you could just block certain sites. You can't do that anymore. Sites are created by the hundreds every second. So what you do is you subscribe to a service like Securely, or, and there's, there's a ton of them. But each one of them has contents, categories. So we filter by content category. Gaming is one of them because it's, it's a distraction in class. That, that's a big one that we get a lot of haters for. But in any event, yeah, it's done by category. It's not done, we don't block sites, per se. We block by category. However, teachers have, if, if there's something that's educationally viable, teachers can certainly put in a ticket asking for us to take a look at it, and if it's something that we- And if it's something that we can, we will unblock it because we can whitelist them. But one thing that does happen a lot is some of these sites also collect a lot of personally identifiable information. And we have to be very careful about that because we're responsible for that. And there's a lot of gaming sites that have a lot of nefarious things going on in the background, so.
The other thing too with the content, because this has come up for like Netflix and things that people want access to, there's like copyright rules. We're not allowed to have them streamed.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's the other thing that was new that we put in place here. We did not allow them, you can't use like your YouTube TV subscription. You can't use in the district.
Netflix, those things, yeah.
So that was, that was a change because that was allowed before.
Right. I feel like that's a teacher conversation.
It's not legal to use your personal account, even though it's paid for in school.
Kids have a lot of Netflix passwords.
Right.
We didn't make a lot of friends with that either.
But to, the, the stuff you said before, I think our students would want to know, right? Like, that, that makes sense to me, right? And I don't think that our students are unreasonable. I think it's a, just an information piece, a communication piece that, how can we let them know, hey, this is how this exists and why? Because also their knowledge for being safe online when they're not on our devices.
Yeah. Point taken. Thank you. Kat?
I'm just a little confused. The 19 people you show in the organizational chart with NAREC next to them and so forth. Are all of you Schenectady City District employees? Or do you, are some of you with NAREC? Or are all of you with NAREC? How does this break down?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the way, so when I got here, we was, obviously made some changes to the IT division. But one of the things I noticed is we need support, and these guys are experts. So NAREC is a subset of BOSI's, Capital Region BOSI's.
Right.
They're, they're kind of their own entity, but they're part of them. And so these employees belong to BOSI's NAREC. And, but they are dedicated to support as part of our partnership. So one of the things I had asked them was like, look, let's make a model where you're supporting, you know, a large district like Schenectady, a number of devices. We're their biggest client. We've, they've never supported a district of this size. But they don't belong to us. They belong to NAREC. So they, sometimes these names do change because people change. But this is the amount of resources that have been allocated to support. And we receive aid on all of this because it's not, they're not our employees. So we don't, we're not treated the same way. So again, we get a percentage, I want to say it's about 70%, we get on every dollar we spend back from this relationship. But those people who have NAREC, so Ken technically serves in this capacity, but he technically belongs to NAREC. He retired from the position in a previous district.
Well, that's what I thought. I remembered that.
Remember, there's a waiver.
I'm a retirement failure.
Your employee by.
Exactly.
I get my check from NAREC, but I, I belong to Schenectady.
Exactly, exactly. Yeah, so, so Ken is here every day. Julie's here, I think for the most part, every day of the week as well.
Two to three days, yeah.
Two to three days a week. So some of these people are here a portion of the week. But what we wanted you to show is that we grew the infrastructure of support as a result of the partnership. So if NAREC was to go with that partnership, we would be in a pretty bad space.
So we have, it looks to me like we have five employees ourselves that are covered in the budget or-
Correct.
Mr. Stockley over there is one of them.
Time employees. But we did budget for technically Ken's position, but we have not necessarily filled that vacancy because Ken's in.
I just wanted to understand where we were relative to two years ago and how it-
Yeah, yeah, that's the point I wanted to make in the beginning is that-
I mean, I knew we were getting the resources and it was BOSI's coverage, but I wasn't sure where we were.
I'd like to take a lot of credit for some of the stuff that's been done. But the reality is we got a lot more people to get it done and we got some really talented people to get it done too, so.
So don't forget GBT.
Yeah.
Chat GBT.
I have a question. How do we inactivate people who are leaving our district?
So that's part of the automation that we set up with ClassLink. ClassLink pulls data every hour from Envision. And if somebody goes from an active employee to an inactive employee, that triggers a process in what we call Active Directory. It disables their accounts, which propagates down through a whole bunch of others, like Infinite Campus, our student information system. Those accounts are tied to their AD accounts, so it deactivates that, deactivates their badges and everything else. So it's an automated process now.
Yeah, so what happens tonight after the board takes action on like personnel consent items and resolutions, then HR takes, and Mecca is one of our folks, looks through the resolutions that were acted upon, then initiates the process through Envision, which then trickles, and so we often get, those of us on kind of cabinet or executive leadership, we'll get an email saying this person was onboard, this person was hired, and then it kind of starts the process. And so when they print out the ID in HR, it works on the doors that they're supposed to. Then they go in, they have a login, and this is their password and username. So like, it's a domino effect. But it starts right here at this table. The board takes action and then it decides how it goes from there.
Yep.
I just ask because I've worked at a place where you leave, but you still have access for a long time.
Hotel California.
That's Hotel California. That's how it used to be. So when we got here, we had like 1,200 accounts that were still active. If somebody had their ID, probably could have won.
And, you know, we had the same problem at Shen. It's a, we used to, my team at Shen used to take the board minutes and go through the board minutes to see who resigned, who was hired, and then work off of that. Yeah, it was cumbersome. This is all automated now and takes a lot of the human error out of it. You know, you didn't miss an email. Yeah.
So Envision is the biggest thing. We change something in Envision, it trickles down to, which is our business payroll. We don't want to overpay anybody, right?
And the same goes for students too, because when a student is disenrolled from the district, Infinite Campus is linked to ClassLink and it disables their account as well.
So I just wanted to go back to the walled garden, just for clarity to understand. So I think you said that the students, when they send an email, they can send it within-
Within the domain.
Okay.
SchenectadySchools.org.
Okay. What about the flip side? What if someone's trying to email a student?
They can't. It's rejected, yeah.
Okay.
I think we have email enabled for juniors and seniors because they needed to communicate with colleges, yeah.
That makes sense.
Which, I don't really like that much, but we're accommodating because they, they need it.
We're giving them some freedom.
Yes, that's right. I just, I like to-
Sorry, ma'am, 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 sorry. Yeah, I know you're excited. I understand.
No, I, I appreciate that because I, I'm just thinking maybe for even parents, students in the district, I was trying to send my daughter her physical so she could sign up at school because they were like, get it? And I'm like, how come you're not getting this?
Yeah, how dare you, right?
I know, I was like, I don't know.
Well, I think it goes to Jamaica's point. We just got to communicate what's allowed in the walled garden.
So that they know.
So kids can know better.
Email it directly to the nurse.
Exactly.
There you go. There you go.
Or text them.
Or Mr. Green.
Yeah.
Or the principal. Send it to Dennis.
Are there any other questions? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, board, so our next agenda item for possible final review is our BOE goal-setting discussion. Just a reminder, if two or more board members feel we need to discuss and review the goals further, we will move in that direction and continue to work on the goals until all or the majority of the board are in agreement. We will revisit three, specifically three goals tonight. One was tabled and two, some folks or one board member actually asked to revisit for additional questions, input, et cetera. We will continue to engage in a systemic structure that ensures transparency and inclusivity for all board members. Just a friendly reminder, our goals are intended to be our board's internal guide. It's intentionally meant to align with our superintendent goals, district vision, goals, and strategic plan. And it helps keep us grounded in our priorities, in our priorities while not overstepping our board goals or board rules. So we will begin, it's on the board docs. And I'll give you all a few minutes just to take a look at all of them very quickly. And then we will focus on three. One, three, three, and three, four. So I'll give you a few minutes. Okay, can we, do we have any questions for one and two? I know we reviewed it, but I know, Jamaica, you weren't here when we finalized. You're good? Okay.
I'm good.
So we're going to move right on to number three. So number three, one, which says, "The board will provide every school with the resources needed to maximize and enrich our students' educational and social experience so that all students have an opportunity to graduate college and career-ready." That was tabled. The reason why it was tabled, it was one, there was some discussion and there were some concerns, not even concerns, questions about the college and career readiness. And the question was around, how do we ensure that we're doing that?
I think part of the question also was that we may not have all the resources needed to maximize. I mean, there are limited resources, so that was part of the question when we say that we will provide with the resources needed to maximize. And the idea was, you know, we will, we will strive to do this.
I thought that was what we talked about, like to the best of our ability.
And then I said, that sounds a little lame, like-
Right, right.
I understand that this is aspirational, but, this is aspirational, but, you know, the will versus the striving seem to be, to be relevant.
But then I thought we just said we would take the word "the" out.
Which ones?
They were taking out the word "the."
With resources needed?
Yeah.
So provide every school with resources needed to maximize and enrich our students' educational and social experience, dot, 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 dot.
Question that, that may or may not change the, the whole sentence because to Kathy's point of what resources we have as opposed to how they're allocated. I'm trying to work this out while speaking. Is there a way to word it to be supportive of the equitable distribution of resources for our students' educational and so- social experiences that prepare them for future access and opportunities or something, right? So even like taking out the college and career readiness, but instead speak to how, one, the equity piece, right, which is, which is huge for us, that the resources are equitable across the, the district and what's needed where. And then it's about supporting the whole student for their future endeavors once they leave our, our district. Right? Because then it encompasses whatever that path is and our role in supporting them to their future endeavors. Am I being extra? Sorry.
No, I actually like that because I was struggling with the graduate, graduate college and career ready. I'm like, how do we, how do we assess that? I don't, I don't know that that's appropriate.
I'm not saying I agree or disagree. Just a little context with that. The State Education Department uses that term quite often as a way to gauge if our students are prepared to go out in the world. I'm not saying we should, but I just want to give everyone context with that because you'll see it on the website, New York State Education Department, college and career readiness, college and 21st century skills, college and career readiness. I just want to throw that out there.
Is that based on, like, testing?
Nope, not necessarily.
The language is just-
Generic.
Based on-
Yeah, well, I would say is-
Historical institutional language.
What I would say is that they use Regents exams. If you score over 85 or higher as college-ready on ELA and I believe math. So just, there is a little bit of context with that. They do view college ready. I believe it's 85 on ELA and math Regents exam, which would be the 11th grade. And I think it's, I want to say algebra for math.
They see that as a goal, as an outcome.
They view that as, so they, that's how they quantify college readiness.
But I don't know how that compares to our students when they actually get to college, right? Because there's, there's an entire population of students that graduate from high schools, not just ours, but everywhere, especially in New York State, who then need remedial classes in college. So if you need a remedial class when you get to college, were you college-ready? And while I, I know, you know, New York State Ed, that's their, their vision and their goal. I don't think, one, the language of supporting students in their future endeavors is against college and career-ready. I think it just allows us to be really intentional about, we're here to educate students and support them as whole beings as they leave this, this space.
I have one thing real quick. My mic is so low tonight. About this, this goal that we in combined time have been talking about for maybe this one sentence over 35 minutes. The point of the goal for this one is about providing resources. And if you look at our first goal and fiscal responsibility, we really already kind of touched on it in there in terms of budget development. So do we need number one here?
It's up to the board.
That's why I was posing the question.
So your proposal is just to get rid of number one?
Right, because if you look at, talking about resources and everything, we talk about that in number one, in fiscal responsibility.
I so appreciate you.
I can't talk about this number just sentence anymore.
So do we want to get, is everyone okay with that?
It is duplicative.
How does everyone? We're good? Okay.
Delete there.
Okay, so we have deleted number one. So three and four actually were questions for, that came up. It wasn't anyone actually that's here right now. So we can take a look, and I think Vivian is okay now, but let's take a look and see if anyone has any questions or comments for number three and four. So for everyone, sorry. Number three is, "Support the superintendent's efforts to provide, provide evidence-based prevention and intervention programs to reduce suspension." And that one, and I know you may not have his goals, but it aligns with his goals. Are we okay with that one? Okay, so that one, we're good. Number four, "Advocate for an inclusive recruitment and hiring process that engages staff retention initiatives and supports new hirees."
Says encourages, not engages. You said engages. It says encourages.
Oh, encourages.
Listen, I almost like engages better.
So engage or encourage. So it says advocate, thank you. Advocate for an inclusive recruitment and hiring process that encourages staff retention initiatives and supports new hirees. Or new hires. Are we okay?
Fine. Can I just read the sentence one more time?
Sure.
What was the question on this one? Do you know why she- I think she just suggested it be put in.
Yeah, just to come back, because we didn't really-
It wasn't, it wasn't there before. Oh, okay. And so Bernice is bringing it up.
I, I was only thinking about the, the environmental piece, but I think it is kind of there, right? Like, we want an environment that people want to stay in, and I think that's-
It's there. Okay. So I will give the board, because we did number four. Those were really only three. I will give the board about three minutes just to quickly look at everything because if we are good, we're done with our board goals. So I'll give you about three minutes.
Can I just ask a follow-up question, number four?
Sure, sure.
So advocating for an inclusive recruitment and hiring process, I'm wholly on board with that. I'm trying to find, because we're not responsible for that practice-
For the inclusive recruitment and- For the inclusive recruitment and hiring, right? That's.
But we.
You're responsible for the policy.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Down under Superintendent's brief, what is that part? Because I, is, is equality is, it's sort of the next page down.
Giving everyone a shoe.
And giving everyone a show or a shoe.
I think it's a typo.
I think so too. I thought it was supposed to be a shoe, but I wasn't sure exactly what it was trying to tell me there.
Oh, yeah, and that, yeah.
Is giving everyone a show?
No, he does have that. It's giving everyone a shoe that fits.
Right, but it's a show.
Oh, on the top. Oh, okay, okay, yeah.
No, but I.
And that's not going to be part of our goal. That was just something to share with the board.
Kathy always finds typos, whether they're numeric or grammatic.
And remember, this is a draft, but that information was just really for the board.
You need chat GPT.
There you go, there you go.
There's actually some good things about it.
So are we okay, everyone?
I'm good.
Really? That's interesting. I'd like to hear about that.
Okay, I saw yes from Erica, VP Nohalani, you're okay Kathy, Prinsella.
Yeah, oh wait, are you doing the?
Yeah, I did the Jeffrey.
Oh my gosh. It is getting late.
We're good?
Yes.
We're okay? Okay, all right. Thank you. I just, I do want to say thank you to the board and I am going to clap for all of us. We went through a, we went through a process that was new, that was new, that was different. And we did it for the first time and we did it. So I am very proud of all of you for engaging in the conversations because they weren't easy, but they were easy in the sense that we weren't sure where we're heading. So I thank all of you.
Bernice, I just want to point out too, when we were in that workshop in October and he was talking about doing board goals and he was like, maybe by April you'll have them done. And you were like, no, that's so long, but here we are.
I know, because I wanted it done in one board meeting. I know. He was like, no. So no, thank you. This is a huge, huge accomplishment. Awesome, board members. Awesome. Thank you.
So what happens next year? When do you do this?
So, oh.
Good question. So what's going to happen?
What's going to happen, next steps, we will, I will share it with the superintendent, who will share it with Karen, and it will be posted on our website. Then to your question, Prinsella, we will annually take a look at our board goals because things change. Priorities change, board members change. So we'll look at it. Doesn't mean that it will change the board goals depending on where we're at in the school district and on our board, but it's something that we will continuously take a look at. Thank you for the question. All right, awesome. Thank you, everyone. So now we will continue on with the policy update. The following policies are presented for first reading. Policy five, six, seven, eight, use of security cameras. Do we have any questions, comments?
Is this a totally new pro, uh, new policy or not? I didn't have.
Yeah, so we, the district does not currently have a policy on security cameras and so this is really important for us to establish one that the board is also in support of. As we work with families or we have situations where security cameras are used, it's important for us to have some policy that drives decision-making around access to cameras, who can view what's on the cameras and things of that nature.
Okay, thank you.
So this is a brand-new policy.
Any questions? Comments?
If, if, if I'm reading it correctly, it still allows for, because I mean, there's restrictions on who can see what, but it does still allow that if parents have questions regarding something that involves their child, they have access, and it says the superintendent or the designee, which I'm guessing would be like the building principal or, or something, right?
Yeah, or Mr. Russo.
Okay.
The, the only thing is that it is a written request. Just wanted to make sure.
How will this then? Will there be a need to address any other policies relating to appeals of discipline? Because when someone, something happens right now and they request a, a review, will there be a separate, like you have to request the review and if you want part of that review to be the review of the video?
No, so we usually typically use it as part of record for disciplinary hearings. So like video footage is included in the hearing and that's typically where families do see the video footage. There wouldn't be a need for that.
Okay.
It would be something happened and I want to see it. Or if someone comes in and we say, well, you know, no. Sometimes we don't show them because it, people are looking for either like, I want to get revenge to whoever else is in the background. And so that was part of the conversation we had at Policy Committee was that like, in some cases, it continues to escalate the problem bigger and we don't think it's productive for anyone to see it. And, you know, people are angry, but we don't really have policy that typically denies it. Right now it's a superintendent decision. And so, you know, I need a little board policy to guide my decision-making. So, so that's the hope here is that we have policy. But it's also, that's our principals know clearly who should be looking at cameras. Our security monitors that monitor cameras. No one really monitors cameras at the building. We've changed that practice with Jeff getting here because we, we thought it was unproductive. So now everything's requested and then we provide the footage versus having folks sitting on something and other folks looking over it and trying to protect the integrity of that, so.
Any other questions? Because I know that was part of the consent agenda items, but I know that people may have had some questions. So now we're going to go to the consent agenda items.
And that's just, this is just first reading, so this will come back again to the board. So I recommend that maybe spend a little more time if you have more questions. Either Prinsella, Vivian, and myself are on the Policy Committee. And, no, I'm sorry, and we can bring it back to the group or, you know, we could have any answers to any questions.
So the consent agenda includes items that are approved by consent without a vote and were previously sent to the board for review. However, single items can be considered separately and taken off the consent agenda by a single member if they wish to do so. Would anyone like to remove an item?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to remove item number ten B seven from consent.
Okay, thank you, Board Member Jamaica. We will vote on that item after our exec session. Thank you. So with the other, let's, so resolutions nine through eleven and with the exception of the one that Board Member Jamaica mentioned, as itemized on the consent agenda, are presented for approval. I'll accept the motion to approve these items. Motion?
So moved, Erica.
Thank you, Erica. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Nohalani. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Resolution twelve, appointing certain employees tenure. I'll accept the motion to approve this resolution. Motion?
Kathy, so moved.
Thank you, Kathy. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Prinsella. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries and.
Are they here?
Yeah, so unfortunately, one of the teachers that got tenure had to run, had a sick child, but the board did approve tonight the appointment of some new folks to the district. So they are in the audience, so I want to just recognize them. They stayed really long to have you approve them and know it's official. So I'll start out with Assistant, new Assistant Director for Adult and Continuing Education, Maria DeNovio. I think she's in the audience. You want to stand and wave? Welcome to Schenectady. Next, joining us in the Office of Student Support Services, Assistant Director Angela Pastizio. Am I saying it wrong, Angela? Pastizio, yeah, there's Angela. She's joining us. She'll be a great addition. And then last but not least, new gentleman coming from, I forgot, I think it's the Bronx, the borough, if I remember, the borough of Brooklyn. Huh? Brooklyn, baby, that's right. Joining us from New York City DOE, Mr. Kirk Wilkinson, being Assistant Principal over at Steinman's. Bronx, Brooklyn, you know, it's all beat right now. Just kidding, Mr. Wilkinson. Don't get me, I know. There's more Bronx over here. I know that.
So thank you and welcome to Schenectady.
Yes, welcome. So we'll continue with Resolution thirteen, setting forth the parameters for the date of the board's annual reorganizational meeting. I'll accept the motion to approve this resolution.
So moved.
Motion, thank you. Nohalani, second?
Second, Erica.
Thank you, Erica. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Resolution fourteen, adopting the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four school year calendar. I'll accept the motion to approve this resolution. Motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Prinsella. Second?
Second, Erica.
Thank you, Erica. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. We have a second opportunity for comments from the public or board members. Any comments? Okay. An executive session is now called.
Sorry, what was the one? We voted on the one that Jamaica took off?
No, we're going to discuss further.
Oh, I get it. I see, understand now. Thank you.
No problem. That's all right.
I was confused.
No, that's okay.
All right, so an executive session is now called for the purpose of discussing the medical, financial credit or employment history of a particular person or corporation. I'll accept the motion to go into exec session. Motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Nohalani. Second?
Second, Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Good evening, everyone and board members. We will go into exec session.